Good afternoon. At this time, I'll call to order the meeting, the school board meeting of Volusia County, Florida. Today is Tuesday, October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, and the time right now is four thirty-five. So today, as we do in our schools each and every day, we will recite the pledge of allegiance. We will hear the national anthem and observe a moment of silence and reflection. For the pledge today, we will have a video from our students from Spirit Elementary. But for the national anthem, we're going to be live today. It's going to be led by our university high school chorus and Mr. Jonathan Anderson, the teacher. And just so that you do know, they will be heading out in the summer of twenty twenty-seven on a trip to Italy along with a few other cities. And so we're looking forward to hearing from them this afternoon in a few moments. Following the anthem, we will remain standing for a moment of silence. So at this time, will you please join me and stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For the grand parts we watched were so gallantly streaming. And the rocket's flare, the bumper's singing air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you. You may be seated. And I think as they're exiting, we should give them another round of applause. Thank you, University High, for coming. This is why we're here. We're here for students. And so tonight, it's, I always love it, even if they do it via video. But it's really special when they can come here and sing for us. So, welcome. And at this time, I'm going to introduce those that are here with me. I'm going to start over here on my far left. We have Mrs. Donna Brosmer representing District Four. Mrs. Krista Goodrich is not here with us this evening. She represents District Two. Then we have Mr. Andrew Langenbach. He is one of our attorneys, and he does E S E and A D A compliance. And he's filling in for Dr. Evans, who is at training today. Then moving over to the far right, I have Mrs. Celeste Gilmore, our agency clerk. She's the lady that keeps it all together and has it prepared for us. Then we have Mrs. Jessie Thompson representing District Three. Mr. Ruben Kloner, Vice Chair, representing District Five. And then we have our wonderful Superintendent, Dr. Carmen Balgobin. And I am Jamie Haynes, and I represent District One, and I'm your chair at this time. But on tonight's agenda, items for approval are items one point zero three, two point zero two, six point zero two, and fifteen point zero one through fifteen point zero four. We have public participation times throughout the evening. The first one will be for items on the consent agenda. So if you wish to speak about any item that's on the consent agenda, please see Mrs. Danielle Johnson that's over here, and she will have you fill out a green card, and you can list which item that is. Then at six P M., we have a time certain or shortly thereafter for items of general interest pertaining to public education in Volusia County. A total of up to fifteen minutes will be provided for public comment at that time, and that's three minutes per individual. Then time will be provided for public comment on any action item before a board vote is called on that item. The action items tonight are action items fifteen point zero one through fifteen point zero four. You can speak on one or multiple during that time. Then finally, we have time that we provide at the end of the meeting for public comments for items of general interest pertaining to public education in Volusia County before any items from the board, superintendent, or attorney are up for discussion or announcement. So we're moving on now to item one point zero two. Our district vision statement is to create lifelong learners prepared for an ever-changing global society. We are now on item one point zero three, approval of the minutes. Board members, you had an opportunity to read the minutes from the September twenty-third, twenty twenty-five special session, the workshop session, and the regular session. Do we have a motion to approve the presented minutes?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Klon. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Brosmer. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of approving the minutes from the September twenty-third, twenty twenty-five special session, workshop, workshop session, and regular session, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. We are now moving on to item two point zero one, agenda changes and the approval of the agenda. Dr. Balgobin, are there any agenda changes before the agenda is presented to the board for approval?
No, Madam Chair, I have no changes.
All right, board members, you've heard that the superintendent has no agenda changes. So do we have a motion to approve the presented agenda?
Still moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Brosmer. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Thompson. Any discussion? Hearing none, then I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of approving the agenda as presented this evening, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. We are now moving on to item three point zero one, announcements by Dr. Carmen Balgobin, our Superintendent. Dr. Balgobin?
Thank you, Madam Chair, board members, members of the audience, and those of you tuning in from home. Thank you for joining us. So we do have a few announcements today that I'd like to share with you. First and foremost, there's lots of important dates in the month of October. As October is recognized as National Bullying Prevention Month, also National Principal Month. Our Hispanic Heritage Month also is through October the fifteenth. So there will be lots of celebration taking place at the school level. We also have between October thirteenth to the seventeenth, National School Lunch Week. And I know that many of us are in participation of that, as we have in previous years. October fifteenth also is Unity Day, Stop Bullying Day. October twentieth through the twenty-fourth is National School Bus Safety Week. And I'll tell you, when it comes to safety on the buses, it's every single day, and that means everyone doing their part. Also, October twenty-third through the thirty-first is Red Ribbon Week and a Drug-Free America. I would say that's every day also. And October twenty-eighth, it's the National Force Responders Day. So I want, I'd like to thank everyone that's part, that plays a role in any of these, you know, dates of celebration. Thank you for all that you do, because after all, we're a community, and it takes everyone doing our part to ensure that our community is safe, healthy, and successful. Welding and ribbon cutting, so let's talk about that. I think many of you, not think, I know many of you were there with us at Deltona High School. Do we have any Deltona High School students here or staff members in the audience? There you go. There you go. A proud, a proud member right there. So we had our opportunity, and I'd like to thank first and foremost our C T divisions, our school-based team, and all of our partners in education, because last week, they had their ribbon cutting ceremony. And when it comes to welding, we know that that's a high-demand, high-scale area. We're looking at over three hundred and twenty thousand new welding professionals that will be needed in the U.S. by twenty twenty-nine. And this number could be much higher than this. So, and not only it's a high-demand area, just to give you an example, we did our ribbon cutting, and we have over more than two hundred students who have already enrolled into this hands-on experience, high-career field at Deltona High. So this doesn't, it's just not just a new program for our students, but really, it's an investment in our children's and their future here in V C S. Also ribbon cutting, right? Two schools, two brand-new schools. We're welcoming Stark Elementary, and also congratulations to the entire community of Stark for showing an improvement in students' academic excellence going from a D-rated to an A-rated school this past year. But we welcome our, a brand-new Stark Elementary, and it was home to our first magnet program for the STEM and arts. So again, congratulations to the entire community. And Orange City Elementary also, we did our ribbon cutting there. Again, both schools truly representation of what the community needs. So I'd like to thank all of our taxpayers, but also our Hafecent Sales Committee for approving both of these schools. And for all of our partners in education, these campuses were jam-packed, and it really shows the power of when a community comes together and work for the betterment of our students. I think at each of these campuses, we saw a clear representation of that. Also, again, thank you to Amazon, who donated a generous check for twenty thousand dollars for our STEM program. And this contribution will help support twenty of our robotics team and Title One schools. So thank you, Amazon, and I know this is just the beginning of a very strong partnership here in V C S. Thank you for all that you do for our students. Bystown. So Bystown, last week, several board members, you were there with me also. And I'd like to thank J A, our Junior Achievement, which through our partnership with J A, twenty-two of our elementary schools are participating in what's called Bystown for Fourth Graders. And this program, what it does, it combines in-class learning with a day-long visit to a simulated town, allowing our students to operate banks, manage restaurants, write checks. Believe it or not, I got a check too when I was there, guys. It was a blank check. But I want to congratulate, again, all twenty-two schools that are participating in this, because, you know, we talk about the purpose of schooling, which is to prepare students to become productive members of their society. So this is an opportunity for elementary students to see a community in action and to understand all the different roles that are part of a community and why it's so important to not just operate independent, but also, most importantly, interdependently. So we saw, we had our mayor, we had a mayor from De Berry there, that I like to thank her for being a keynote speaker for our students. But also, in the town, we were able to experience mayor, bank owners, Advent Health was there, Mr. Klon, you saw Advent Health. But basically, our students were able to apply their learning and gain firsthand experience in terms of what a community looks like. So I'd like to thank the board members who were there with me to experience this event. And Heart of V C S, congratulations to the very first Heart of V C S Award winner, Talisha Campbell. She's from Holly Hill Elementary, and she was nominated for being the Behind the Scenes Hero category. She was so deserving of this award. I had a pleasure, the pleasure of getting to know her and her story as a volunteer before becoming the Principal Secretary at Holly Hill. She's made an impact not only in the lives of those around her, but that entire community. Her story is truly powerful, and it shows that when you have a heart and you invest that heart into the greater good, what that looks like. So I think Talisha Campbell is clearly an example of that. She's that quiet force that keeps Holly Hill going, and she's a pillar in their community. And we do have a video that we will show at the end. I have one more announcement. Again, thank you, board members, and to the entire V C S team that were there at the Home Warming Event for Food Brings Hope, Homes Bring Hope. As you know, Homes Bring Hope, Food Bring Hope is a very special partner with Volusia County Public Schools. Six of our employees, six of our employees and their families received brand-new homes in Daytona recently. So their family, we know that a family is complete, right? When you have and you get an opportunity to share those precious moments with your family in a home, in a place that you can call home. And the Home Warming that was held last month not only gave our employees the chance to have that completeness, but most importantly, the opportunity to form memories. And I think as we were talking to some of the family members, their daughters, husbands, small children that were there, you know, one of the things that we heard is how excited they were to have their own room or have their own living room, and the memories, their back, their own backyard, and that the memories that they will be forming together as a family. So I'd like to thank the board, our entire team, because not only did we donate the land, but also Home Brings Hope, and all of the partners that came together to make this fully realize itself. And we also have a short video. So we have two videos. I think the last time I didn't have any video for you, so I'm making up two short videos. You ready, Chad? Talisha Campbell was nominated and selected to receive the Heart of V C S Award in the category of Behind the Scenes Hero. She's being recognized for being the quiet force that keeps this school running smoothly. So on the nomination form, this is what the team here said about me. They said that every school has its heartbeat, someone who quietly keeps everything running, often without recognition. At Holly Hill, that heartbeat is Talisha. From her desk as a Principal Secretary, Talisha orchestrates the daily rhythm of our campus with unmatched grace and precision. She's not just the to-go person. She is the do-it-all person. Whether it's stepping into absent roles, serving in classrooms, or managing fundraisers, Talisha is a cross-train in nearly every area and always ready to fill in. Whether she's wherever she is needed, her adaptability and dedication ensures that Holly Hill never misses that beat. But her impact just doesn't stop when the final bell rings. Talisha volunteers her time after school for committees, most notably the Tea Time Girls, Tea Time Girls Mentoring Club, where she helps nurture and empower the next generation.
I love Volusia County, and I love our community, and that's why I came into the school as a worker, because I just knew that I can be more of an impact as a staff member than just as a parent volunteer. Be in the community, because you just don't know what the community needs unless you're in the community. So just being in the community and just always willing to serve and, most of all, put God first, because he is definitely my leader.
Feel that. And there's nothing more powerful than that, you know? Because some of us, we live our lives here, and it's good to, while you're living your life, that you're forming a legacy. It's very clear that your legacy is, shows truly who you are.
We walking through our new home.
My heart is full. I am, I'm overwhelmed, but in a very good way.
This piece of land used to belong to Volusia County Schools, and it was gifted to Homes Bring Hope in order to get some of the Volusia County employees on this street right here.
This opportunity here was a way for Volusia County Schools to give back to our community and to give back to our employees. They've been waiting a long time to be able to have a home, and now they're going to have a home that is theirs, right here in Volusia.
My aunt used to stay right next to the church down there, and so I grew up on this street, running up and down. So just knowing the history and the community in this area where I grew up is a wonderful opportunity just to come back and live right back in the community where it all started.
I thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you so much.
We have very happy families. These are beautiful homes in a great location, and we can't wait to be able to have more partnerships with Volusia County Schools.
This is when a community comes together, and as a community, we need to find ways to lift each other up. And I think this is just a perfect example here. So again, so grateful to Homes Bring Hope, our founder, Mr. and Mrs. Hosseini, and for all that they do for our community.
Knowing that we all are in the same family, the same network, that was my biggest, like, yes, this is going to, this is the place for my family.
To know that I came home and I could put my feet up in my home and look out my backyard and run around on my grass, a whole lot sweeter. My job, I love my job, period. That's just the truth. But I'm going to have a big smile on my heart and my face for a long time when I think of our home.
That concludes.
Thank you. I was, I was expecting a new school video too.
We, we have to, like, space it out, Ms. Haynes.
A welding video, and a welding video?
We have that too. We have that too. It's coming.
I do just have to add, that experience, seeing those six families that were coming in to those homes, and they actually told their stories while we were there that day, and it was just amazing. And one family had the cutest little four-year-old, and he just wanted to run around in the grass. And he's like, I really get to play out here in the backyard. And we were like, yes, it's your backyard. And so it would... And so it would, to the point that I think he locked everybody out of the house even at one point, but we had fun with him and all of them. So at this time, we are moving on to a recognition. We haven't had, this is our first one since we returned for this school year, and so it's item 4.01, Career and Technical Education Agriculture. And so, Dr. Balgobin.
Yes, Madam Chair, if you look in the audience here, you will see, this again, it reminds us why we do what we do, right? But our students from the Future Farmers of America, FFA, they recently completed the 97th Florida, annual Florida State FFA Convention and Expo and various leadership development events, and were the proficiency winners in their respective competitive events. So I'm going to ask at this point that Dr. Kristen Pierce, our CTE Coordinator, along with Nora Paddy, our CTE Curriculum Specialist, come up and share a little bit about these different categories, who is in the audience, and why these students deserve to be here today and celebrated by us.
Good evening, Chair Haynes, School Board Members, Dr. Balgobin. On behalf of the CTE Department, it is a privilege to recognize the power of our agriculture programs. They prepare students for college careers and lifelong success. Here in Volusia, those programs spark curiosity, build leadership skills, and equip our students with the confidence to shape the future of our community. It's my pleasure to introduce our new agriculture specialist, Nora Paddy, to share the outstanding accomplishments of our students and teachers. Nora?
Thank you, and thank you, Chair Haynes, Board Members, Dr. Balgobin, and Dr. Pierce, for the opportunity to share with you today the accomplishments of our students who participate in Future Farmers of America, FFA, at Deland High School, Deland Middle School, and Taylor Middle High School. As well, we will recognize the outstanding mentorship of one of our agriculture teachers from Deltona High School. At the 97th Annual Florida State FFA Convention and Expo, our VCS students were proficiency winners and top finishers in various leadership development events. The FFA competitive events align with our Florida agricultural education standards and the mission of FFA, premier leadership, personal growth, and career success. Students, as we call your names, please stand to be recognized, and we will take group photos at the conclusion of the presentation. Zach Mosley, student from Deland High School, state champion in the Discussion Meet Leadership Development Event. Curtis Bates, Mason Tub, Logan McLendon, and Jake Newman, students from Deland High School, Agricultural Mechanics Career Development Event State Champions. Mia Portillo from Deland High School, Florida State Star Greenhand and the Beef Production Entrepreneurship Proficiency Winner. Isabella Moss from Deland High School, Sheep Production Proficiency Winner. Haley Lesnar, student from Deland High School, Agriculture Sales Proficiency Winner. Ava Sigmeister and Luke Lunsford, students from Deland High School, State FFA Agroscience Fair Environmental and Natural Resources Division VI Winner. Ava Sigmeister and Maggie Lervier, students from Deland High School, were the State FFA Ornamental Horticulture Demonstration Winner of Artistic Arrangement Division. Lacy Box and Mia Portillo from Deland High School, State FFA Ornamental Horticulture Demonstration Winners in the Consumer Use Division. Kelsey Sabatini and Claire Doan from Deland Middle School, State FFA Ornamental Horticulture Demonstration Winners in the Middle School Consumer Use Division. Julie Portillo and Olivia Carbino, students from Deland Middle School, were the State FFA Ornamental Horticulture Demonstration Winners of the Middle School Marketing Division. Isabella Norman Rusnick, Julie Portillo, Claire Doan, Peyton Brazelton, Ava Warrensford, and Kelsey Sabatini, students from Deland Middle School, were the State FFA Parliamentary Procedure Champions. Jake Schmidt and Henry Hanley, students from Taylor Middle High School, were the State FFA Ornamental Horticulture Demo Winners of the Middle School Production Division. And I'd like to take this opportunity to as well recognize their FFA advisors who are with us today. Teachers, if you would please stand to be recognized. We have Mrs. Carrie Peck from Deland Middle School, Mr. Andrew Peck, and Mr. Brett Bradner from Deland High School. The Career and Technical Education Department adopted the slogan "Skills Build Futures" for the 25-26 school year. For students to acquire the skills necessary to build their futures, we need teachers who are experts in their respective fields. At Deltona High School, agriculture teacher Farah Johnson is an example of an expert in her field. Swiftly teaching across multiple program areas, Ms. Johnson has brought content knowledge on food and natural resources, agri-technology, and agri-sales and business expertise to her students. Please join me in congratulating Ms. Farah Johnson as this year's Region Five National Association of Agricultural Educators Outstanding Mentor.
Board members, that's a lot of winners. We have an amazingly strong agriculture program, and CTE definitely plays a vital role in Florida's success. If you just haven't heard, but through a recent study by Lightcast, Florida is the number-one state in the nation for training workforce talent, actually for the third year in a row. And in CTE and in Volusia County Schools, we don't just open programs. We invest in futures through innovative programs and offerings that are linked to our high-scale, high-wage occupations in this area. So we thank you for your continued support of career and technical education.
I'd also like to say we have a few principals here in the room that represent these students, so if they would also stand so we could recognize them. They're sitting at the back. Come on, gentlemen. They don't follow directions as well as the students.
Gentlemen in the back, please stand. You deserve to be recognized. Let's go.
I also want to say congratulations, in case they go back and watch it, all the students that have already, that won last summer but are already in college this year, because they're scattered across the United States, and we also want to say thank you and congratulations to them for all that they've done. But at this time, we are going to take, go ahead.
I'm sorry, but I would like to weigh in on this. I owned a landscape nursery for 10 years, woody ornamentals, trees, shade trees, citrus, and annuals, and I lobbied on ag issues for statewide, and this is really close to my heart. I'm so grateful to know that there are young people who are, who want to get into agriculture. It's fundamental to our economy, and congratulations to all of you. I'm really proud of you. That's all.
Thanks.
So at this time, we are going to break this up into four photos. I'm actually going to go backwards. We're going to start with Mrs. Farah Johnson. If she'll come forward, and you'll be the first photo. Then we will bring forth the students that are here tonight from Taylor Middle High School. Then we will move into Deland Middle, and we will round it out with Delant High.
Brother to you?
Little family.
It's okay.
Here we go.
There you go.
Three, two.
I'm going to actually hide these for a phone.
Mom's calling. You guys are sworn.
One, three, two, one, three, two, one, three, two, one.
Okay, let's file out next group.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Dad's at Delant Middle?
All right.
Students will come right up.
Delant Middle.
Brad.
What parents do you want to have?
Come on, Dad. Where you at?
Dad.
Come on.
She doesn't want me in picture anymore.
Everyone look this direction.
And then three, two, one.
Very nice.
Do you want your parents?
It's my parents' party.
Brad.
He's not proud of us.
Listen, Delant Middle.
Yes, so we are good together with Delant High.
You're right in the middle, all the students.
Beautiful. How are you?
Nice to see you again.
How are you guys?
I stand down here.
No, you guys come here.
Where you want it?
Are the advisors?
Hey, wait, you're forgetting your principal.
Come on, principal.
I'm going to see player.
Can you go right to center too?
Can I make my shirt?
No, he can't.
Everyone look at each other.
There you go.
One spaces.
Three, two, one.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
This is when a community comes together, and as a community, we need to find ways
to lift each other up, and I think this is just a perfect example here.
So again, so grateful to Homes Bring Hope, our founder, Mr. and Mrs. Hosseini, and for all that they do for our community.
Knowing that we all are in the same family, the same network, that was my biggest, like, yes, this is going to, this is the place for my family.
To know that I came home and I could put my feet up in my home and look out my backyard and run around on my grass, a whole lot sweeter. My job, I love my job, period. That's just the truth. But I'm going to have a big smile on my heart and my face for a long time when I think of our home.
That concludes.
Thank you. I was expecting a new school video too.
We have to, like, space it out, Ms. Haynes.
A welding video?
We have that too. We have that too. It's coming.
I do just have to add, that experience, seeing those six families that were coming in to those homes, and they actually told their stories while we were there that day, and it was just amazing. And one family had the cutest little four-year-old, and he just wanted to run around in the grass, and he's like, "I really get to play out here in the backyard." And we were like, "Yes, it's your backyard." And so it would, to the point that I think he locked everybody out of the house even at one point, but we had fun with him and all of them. So at this time, we are moving on to a recognition. We haven't had, this is our first one since we returned for this school year, and so it's item 4.01, Career and Technical Education Agriculture. And so, Dr. Balgobin.
Yes, Madam Chair, if you look in the audience here, you will see, this again, it reminds us why we do what we do, right? But our students from the Future Farmers of America, FFA, they recently completed the 97th Florida, annual Florida State FFA Convention and Expo and Expo, and were the proficiency winners in their respective competitive events. So I'm going to ask at this point that Dr. Kristen Pierce, our CTE Coordinator, along with Nora Paddy, our CTE Curriculum Specialist, come up and share a little bit about these different categories, who is in the audience, and why these students deserve to be here today and celebrated by us.
Good evening, Chair Haynes, School Board Members, Dr. Balgobin. On behalf of the CTE Department, it is a privilege to recognize the power of our agriculture programs. They prepare students for college careers and lifelong success. Here in Volusia, those programs spark curiosity, build leadership skills, and equip our students with the confidence to shape the future of our community. It's my pleasure to introduce our new agriculture specialist, Nora Paddy, to share the outstanding accomplishments of our students and teachers. Nora?
Thank you, and thank you, Chair Haynes, Board Members, Dr. Balgobin, and Dr. Pierce, for the opportunity to share with you today the accomplishments of our students who participate in Future Farmers of America, FFA, at Delant High School, Delant Middle School, and Taylor Middle High School. As well, we will recognize the outstanding mentorship of one of our agriculture teachers from Deltona High School. At the 97th Annual Florida State FFA Convention and Expo, our VCS students were proficiency winners and top finishers in various leadership development events. The FFA competitive events align with our Florida agricultural education standards and the mission of FFA, premier leadership, personal growth, and career success. Students, as we call your names, please stand to be recognized, and we will take group photos at the conclusion of the presentation. Zach Mosley, student from Delant High School, state champion in the Discussion Meet Leadership Development Event. Curtis Bates, Mason Tub, Logan McLendon, and Jake Newman, students from Delant High School, Agricultural Mechanics Career Development Event State Champions. Mia Portillo from Delant High School, Florida State Star Greenhand and the Beef Production Entrepreneurship Proficiency Winner. Isabella Moss from Delant High School, Sheep Production Proficiency Winner. Haley Lesnar, student from Delant High School, Agriculture Sales Proficiency Winner. Ava Sigmeister and Luke Lunsford, students from Delant High School, State FFA Agroscience Fair Environmental and Natural Resources Division VI Winner. Ava Sigmeister and Maggie Lervier, students from Delant High School, were the State FFA Ornamental Horticulture Demonstration Winner of Artistic Arrangement Division. Lacy Box and Mia Portillo from Delant High School, State FFA Ornamental Horticulture Demonstration Winners in the Consumer Use Division. Kelsey Sabatini and Claire Doan from Delant Middle School, State FFA Ornamental Horticulture Demonstration Winners in the Middle School Consumer Use Division. Julie Portillo and Olivia Carbino, students from Delant Middle School, were the State FFA Ornamental Horticulture Demonstration Winners of the Middle School Marketing Division. Isabella Norman Rusnick, Julie Portillo, Claire Doan, Peyton Brazelton, Ava Warrensford, and Kelsey Sabatini, students from Delant Middle School, were the State FFA Parliamentary Procedure Champions. Jake Schmidt and Henry Hanley, students from Taylor Middle High School, were the State FFA Ornamental Horticulture Demo Winners of the Middle School Production Division. And I'd like to take this opportunity to as well recognize their FFA advisors who are with us today. Teachers, if you would please stand to be recognized. We have Mrs. Carrie Peck from Delant Middle School, Mr. Andrew Peck, and Mr. Brett Bradner from Delant High School. The Career and Technical Education Department adopted the slogan "Skills Build Futures" for the 25-26 school year. For students to acquire the skills necessary to build their futures, we need teachers who are experts in their respective fields. At Deltona High School, agriculture teacher Farah Johnson is an example of an expert in her field. Swiftly teaching across multiple program areas, Ms. Johnson has brought content knowledge on food and natural resources, agri-technology, and agri-sales and business expertise to her students. Please join me in congratulating Ms. Farah Johnson as this year's Region Five National Association of Agricultural Educators Outstanding Mentor.
Board members, that's a lot of winners. We have an amazingly strong agriculture program, and CTE definitely plays a vital role in Florida's success. If you just haven't heard, but through a recent study by Lightcast, Florida is the number-one state in the nation for training workforce talent, actually for the third year in a row. And in CTE and in Volusia County Schools, we don't just open programs. We invest in futures through innovative programs and offerings that are linked to our high-scale, high-wage occupations in this area. So we thank you for your continued support of career and technical education.
I'd also like to say we have a few principals here in the room that represent these students, so if they would also stand so we could recognize them. They're sitting at the back. Come on, gentlemen. They don't follow directions as well as the students.
Gentlemen in the back, please stand. You deserve to be recognized. Let's go.
I also want to say congratulations, in case they go back and watch it, all the students that have already, that won last summer but are already in college this year, because they're scattered across the United States, and we also want to say thank you and congratulations to them for all that they've done. But at this time, we are going to take, go ahead.
I'm sorry, but I would like to weigh in on this. I owned a landscape nursery for 10 years, woody ornamentals, trees, shade trees, citrus, and annuals, and I lobbied on ag issues for statewide, and this is really close to my heart. I'm so grateful to know that there are young people who are, who want to get into agriculture. It's fundamental to our economy, and congratulations to all of you. I'm really proud of you.
Do we know how many are in elementary?
Overall, or like, by grade level?
Oh, overall.
Overall, let me see, there are... Roughly 43, quick count.
Okay, so a big majority. Okay.
All right. That was it. Can you share what the plan from your department?
Yes, ma'am. So, we have a job fair scheduled for Thursday evening from 4:30 to 7:00 at Deland High School, and that is by invitation. We have invited those individuals who have applied and have been vetted as either being certified or eligible for certification to come and sit down and do immediately, immediate one-on-one hiring interviews with principals who still have vacancies. We're targeting, of course, our ESE and our elementary because that's where our largest number are.
And how many job fairs have we had or gone to this year?
So far this year, since July, we've had 32... By the time we get to Friday, we'll be at about 35, because they've got three this week.
Thirty-five job fairs since July?
Yes, ma'am.
And do we have a number of how many people we've gotten from those 35 job fairs?
I will tell you, it varies, because we can go to job fairs hosted by other groups, and the people who are coming aren't necessarily looking for classroom vacancies. We do better when we host those ourselves, or whether we go to, if we go to ones hosted by our college partners.
And how many do we host Volusia County schools in a given school year?
In any given school year, between virtual, face-to-face, I would say we host anywhere from 15 to 20 total.
Fifteen to 20 total. And I know where this year is just kind of begun, but last year, do we know out of the Volusia... And I'm sorry, I'm going all over the place with this. Last year, in the job fairs that we hosted, whether it be virtual or in-person, do we know how many employees we received from those job fairs?
It depends on the time of year. That's the big thing. When we hire in the spring and in the early fall, we, you know, obviously do better, because that's what people are... You know, there's natural moves in the year. As we go into the summer, I mean, into the winter and the early spring, you know, all we have then are usually graduates who are looking for something to fill gaps.
Okay.
So it really, it just ebbs and flows based on the time of year.
Okay. All right, those were my questions. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Don't leave, I want to add to that. So we have senior interns out on our campuses right now, because I came to speak to them when they started at the beginning of the year. And if I remember correctly, there was about 30 of those interns sitting here in this room that are out...
Have to come up just to briefly share real quick about item 10.03, which is the new piece that we're doing with Gaggle.
Yes, absolutely. Mr. McCallum? Can you provide a little bit of a, so I think it's the update regarding the summer deployment that we did and what we're embarking on currently with the services, the outreach for services.
Yes.
For Gaggle.
Alright, so, good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members and Superintendent Dr. Baugman. This is in a continuation to the plan that we started in March, just so you know, with our SSMP students, that we were checking in and calling in on that and having them check with Gaggle, that's required by state statute and state law. Student Support Management Plan is what the SSMP stands for, Mr. Cologne, just so you're aware. So this is in continuation to that. It's a three-step phase, so that was Phase One. Phase Two and Three is where Dr. B wanted us to make sure that we have something for the families, our ESOL students, and then also for our staff. So you will see in here that we have Crisis Intervention Line for reach out for our staff and our students and our ESOL families that help. That's where we kind of get into a little shortage, I'll be very honest with you, is that we don't have that many ESOL or Spanish-speaking staff members to assist. So this is 24/7, around the clock. They can call, they can text, they can do pretty much everything that, everything that a risk assessment does, but they'll never do any kind of engagement with therapy talk, because of course you have to have consent with that piece of it. The last piece of it is the retainer fee for the EAP coverage, and what that is, is for our staff. So we already have our EAP through our other assistants, but now this is an outside third-party staff that where we're hopefully, people will be able to use, feel comfortable with, and be able to speak to and not have to worry about, "I don't really feel comfortable," because that's connected to the district. This is still connected to the district, but it's a third-party entity.
So can you elaborate a little bit as we were doing our data analysis over the summer? I think it was 35 families that received extension of services.
Yep. So the summer program, just so you know, is from June to August is when we rolled it out. We had 302 family responses in June, which is a 23% average. It doesn't seem like a lot, but that is double the national average of when you're trying to reach out to students for these Crisis Management Plan. And then we also had 31% in July, and then 29% in August, which were all double the national average. Just so you know, Gaggle has really taken on to this because it's outside-the-box thinking, and it's a three-tier approach for our students that are SSMP, of course, are severe students, and then also our staff and families. And so this is kind of something they've been modeling when they go out to press conferences or conferences to speak about, about, you know, what Volusia County is doing. So it's really neat, nobody in the state or nation is doing anything like it, so we're kind of leading the charge with this.
Alright, I just want to clarify that this isn't what you've heard of in the past from Gaggle, right? This is using the data from the scanning system that looks for harm to students under safety and security, takes that data into a very humanistic service. So what we're talking here is not really all that much techie. It's using the tech, but it's going into a very human, service-oriented product that is an add-on to Gaggle. And like you said, it's the first one in the country, so it's not something anybody really, you know, has heard much about other than us.
So, we've been very happy, though, with what we were using Gaggle for, like to identify if a student's bringing-
And now we're utilizing that data in a new way.
Yes.
And now we're using, and I also wanted everybody to understand that it's also available for our employees.
Yes, for the, for the EAP system, yes ma'am. For all employees.
All points, and they get a real, live person.
Yes, they do, at any time of the day or night, text or a call.
Alright, thank you very much.
Anyone else?
The other item was 10.04. This is where we're adding on to our VPK. I thought 10.04 was VPK. It is. So, who would like to come forth and give a little bit of information about this piece? Ms. Copeland? Both of you can come up. Because when we talked about this during Agenda Conference, it was very interesting, and I wanted to make sure everybody was clear on what we're doing.
So for 10.04, part of this is that we have added some new VPK classrooms this year, which we're excited about. And so we have added nine classrooms at the schools listed in the background, and this expenditure is for the furniture for those classrooms.
So, if you look, Board members, you'll see if you got any of the additional new, we're getting to the point, almost, I think we have VPK on every campus.
We are at 43 out of 45 elementary schools, so we're almost there. Two more to go.
We have only two left, okay. And so that is a good opportunity. So, thank you for sharing that with us, and maybe next year we'll be adding the final two.
Yes, ma'am.
Alright, so we can bring in our youngest learners. Alright, then we're moving on in order, 11.02, Ms. Thompson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And, Dr. Baugman, I just had a quick couple questions on vacancies, if I could, because I know we had, I just had a question on the current vacancies that we have, like up-to-date, if I could, and if it's not available right now, I completely understand, but you could send it over.
We have it, we have it. Stephanie Warckman?
Hello. So I was just curious as to if we had an up-to-date vacancies, which grade levels they were, which classes, which subject areas, just in the classroom, what we have like right now.
Sure. As of about 3:30 today, when I updated the list, we are currently sitting with 53 district-wide classroom vacancies.
Fifty-three.
The majority of those are at elementary, and most of those came into play with the addition of units when we did the 15-day count.
Do we know how many are in elementary?
Overall, or like by grade level?
Oh, overall.
Overall, let me see, there are... Roughly 43, quick count.
Okay, so a big majority.
Alright.
That was it.
Can you share what, the plan from your department?
Yes, ma'am. So, we have a job fair scheduled for Thursday evening from 4:30 to 7:00 at Deland High School, and that is by invitation. We have invited those individuals who have applied and have been vetted as either being certified or eligible for certification to come and sit down and do immediately, immediate one-on-one hiring interviews with principals who still have vacancies. We're targeting, of course, our ESE and our elementary, because that's where our largest number are.
And how many job fairs have we had or gone to this year?
So far this year, since July, we've had 32, with, by the time we get to Friday, we'll be at about 35, because they've got three this week.
Thirty-five job fairs since July? And do we have a number of how many people we've gotten from those 35 job fairs?
I will tell you, it varies, because we can go to job fairs hosted by other groups, and the people who are coming aren't necessarily looking for classroom vacancies. We do better when we host those ourselves, or whether we go, if we go to ones hosted by our college partners.
And how many do we host Volusia County schools in a given school year?
In any given school year between virtual, face-to-face, I would say we host anywhere from 15 to 20 total.
Fifteen to 20 total. And I know where, this year is just kind of begun, but last year, do we know out of the Volusia, and I'm sorry, I'm going all over the place with this, last year in the job fairs that we hosted, whether it be virtual or in-person, do we know how many employees we received from those job fairs?
It depends on the time of year. That's, that's the big thing. When we hire in the spring and in the early fall, we, you know, obviously do better, because that's what people are, you know, there's natural moves in the year. As we go into the summer, I mean, into the winter and the early spring, you know, all we have then are usually graduates who are looking for something to fill gaps. So it really, it just ebbs and flows based on the time of year.
Okay. Alright, those were my questions. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Don't leave, I want to add to that. So we have senior interns out on our campuses right now, because I came to speak to them when they started at the beginning of the year, and if I remember correctly, there was about 30 of those interns sitting here in this room that are out doing their senior internship. So have we approached any of them to give them employment starting in January?
I offer that the day that we meet with them. If they are in a, in a certificated area that we have a vacancy, we will hire them.
Because we did have a lot of elementary that day.
We, we did, we did. Where we don't seem to have as many are those that are coming through music and some of those singular areas. But you're right, that group was mostly elementary and a few ESE sprinkled in. But no, we offer it immediately, and many of those that are sitting out there right now are already being paid, working as a substitute in a classroom that they have taken over themselves.
Well, the group that was already being paid, they didn't attend this, because they were already with kids. So this was the group that was coming in, that chose that they wanted to do the internship with a teacher, and then find work, and, you know, when they finish in December.
And I will tell you, one of the things that we do is if they choose to start with us, you know, that first day back after break, we do not hire them as a temp employee, we hire them as a continuous service. So, so that allows them to, you know, get all of the full benefits package and everything.
And then I have heard recently that because Orange County did some cuts, we have been able to pick up some people from Orange County?
We have tried to. I will tell you, the majority of the cuts that they made, they were able to displace those individuals into vacancies that they had, but we have, we've been tapping into some job fairs down that way as well, especially in conjunction with UCF.
Well, we, we did hire, I think there are some from OCPS here.
We did. I know of two that we hired, but that was before the school year started, but they were at job fairs that we hosted. So, one being my son's math teacher.
Thank you. We're now moving on to item 12.01, Mr. Cologne?
Oh, that was mine.
Oh, sorry.
I mean, Mr. Cologne can speak on it if he'd like to, but, no, I just wanted to bring this up. I think we've all brought this up at one time or another, but for those that go through the agenda and look at everything, or don't, 12.01 are the donations made to our Volusia County schools. And I just think it's important that people pay attention, because so many people give so much to all of our programs, and that's part of what keeps a lot of this going. I mean, you'll see theater, you'll see a lot of the sports and different teams on there. And I know firsthand that a lot of these wouldn't be possible without these donations. So I want to thank everyone who has donated and keeps these things going. And that list is there for everyone to see at 12.01. That's all.
Thank you. Alright, if there's nothing else, then we will move forward to vote on the Consent Agenda items. Is there any further discussion at all from anyone? Okay, then do I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as it's been presented this evening?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Cologne. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mrs. Brosmer. Okay, I've already been told that people at home are having a hard time hearing, so when the door opens, I'm going to pause before we hold a vote, so that it can be heard and recorded correctly. Sir, will you please have a seat? Okay, so, Mr. Cologne has made the motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented. Mrs. Brosmer has seconded it. Since there's no further discussion, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it passes unanimously. We are now moving on to the first Board Action Item, which is item 15.01. Actual, yeah. 15.01. This is the Annual Florida Safe Schools Assessment Tool, presented by Captain Smith, who always tells me five minutes or less.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, Superintendent. Tonight, I'm here to present to you the Annual Florida Safe Schools Assessment. This is a statutory requirement where we come before you and present our findings from our assessments. This presentation aligns with Policy 511, Safety of Facilities. This presentation also aligns with Guard Rail 2, Provide Conditions That Enhance Student Learning. Here is the background information regarding the Safety and Security Department. In 2001, Florida established Statute 1006.07 regarding the safety and security best practices. Senate Bill 7026 related to establishing a guardian program, and Senate Bill 7030 related to training requirements followed in 2019. In 2021, Alyssa's Law was added, which requires a panic alert system. In 2024, House Bill 1473 became law, focusing on door and gate safety. The Florida Safe Schools Assessment Tool is part of Florida Statute 1006.07. I'm here today to present the results. Each school has gone through a detailed assessment. Currently, all schools are staffed with a Safe School Officer, which is either SRO, SRD, or a School Guardian. We currently have a total of 90 School Guardians, six Lead Guardians, a Guardian Commander, and a Security Operations Coordinator, in addition to Lieutenant Sturrup, Lieutenant Galarza, and I, who oversee the safety and security of Volusia County schools. We have 38 School Resource Officers or Deputies currently on our campuses. Each year, as a result of our findings from the ESTAT, we identify ways to improve the hardening of our schools. This could range from door locks to surveillance cameras or fencing. Last year, the recommendation for hardening were electronic door locks, cameras, and bidirectional amplification. This year, with legislative changes and the county moving to the P-25 radio systems, our need has shifted. Instead of remote door access and bidirectional amplification, we are recommending that camera installation be finished. The program was initially slated to take until 2028, and we are three years ahead of schedule. We should complete the project by December of 2025. Additionally, we discovered schools had different radios. Some were operating with outdated equipment or lacked the funding necessary to secure the equipment needed to effectively communicate. For safety purposes, radios need to be uniformed throughout the district. With that in mind, we created a schedule for district-wide replacement over the next three years. This will ensure all schools have adequate, functioning, professional-grade emergency communication devices to manage their campuses. Finally, we are recommending metal detector installation in all high schools. This is a project that we're currently working on in the district. This concludes the presentation. I do have a safety update, if you'd like it.
Board Members, does anyone have any questions for Captain Smith? Ms. Johnson, I have to ask once again, is there any cards for this item? No, okay. Thank you very much for the update, and we appreciate it. And now you've met the law.
He's got a-
Oh wait, we have to vote.
I got a safety update if you want.
We have to vote on it.
He has a safety update.
You got to vote on it first, I guess.
Oh, we got to vote on this first.
We have to vote on this. So, Dr. Baugman, your recommendation for item 15.01?
Yes, ma'am. I recommend approval of the Florida's Safe School Assessment to ensure the district complies with the Safe Passage Act of 2001, Section 1006.07, parentheses 6, of the Florida statutes, which describes best practices assessments for 25, 26.
So do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Mrs. Thompson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Brosmer. Any further discussion? Ms. Thompson?
Captain, I would just like to thank you and your team for doing this, and also I know that there was some direction from the state that was difficult and expensive last year, and I appreciate you, when it changed, changing, you know, the focus of your safety and security to make sure that you are constantly moving forward, constantly making sure our schools are safe, and you weren't just waiting and being reactive to what happens. You all are really out there, so thank you so much.
Okay, then at this time, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of approving item 15.01, the Annual Florida Safe Schools Assessment Tool, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it passes unanimously. We are now moving on to item 15.02. Ms. Johnson, do you have anything for 15.02? Okay. Then, 15.02 is Authorization to Advertise the Proposed Amendments to School Board Policy 321, Instructional Materials Presented by Dr. Robinsky.
And, here she comes.
Welcome.
Good evening. On the agenda this evening is the proposal to advertise the revisions for Policy 321. There are not significant changes to this policy. The biggest revision is that we removed the reference to Policy 320, because there has been change in the Florida statute regarding the differentiation between instructional materials and library media and other specific materials. We've done a lot of discussion around Policy 320, so we're taking that reference out of Policy 321, so that it specifically references the procedures for the review and adoption of instructional materials.
Board Members, do you have any questions? Okay, then at this time, I need someone to make a motion to, well, the Superintendent-
Recommendation. Madam Chair, I recommend approval to advertise proposed amendments to School Board Policy 321, Instructional Materials.
Okay, you've heard the Superintendent's recommendation. Do I have someone to make a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Cologne. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Thompson. Hearing, no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of approving the Authorization to Advertise Proposed Amendments to School Board Policy 321, Instructional Materials, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Robinsky. We are now moving on to item 15.03. Authorization to Advertise Proposed Amendments to School Board Policy 510, Safety and Security of Students, Personnel, and Property, and Law Enforcement Guidelines. Mr. Langenbach, you're the presenter.
Okay. So on 510, we have made an update to the policy. This would fall under Section F, subsection 2. Subsection, sometimes I'm too loud, sometimes not loud enough, subsection 2. So we're adding language. Subsection 2 involves students with disabilities, de-escalation, and the need for law enforcement, how that plays in. What we've added to this is that nothing in this policy shall preclude any employee from filing a police report with a School Resource Officer or School Resource Deputy for assault and battery by a student. I can expound if everyone would like. So the idea is that while obviously there are protections in place for our students with disabilities, and that's absolutely important for us to have, particularly when scenarios like this arise, there is nothing that can stop a private citizen, obviously, from filing a police report. So we don't want to limit our teachers and their ability to take the action that they are allowed to take.
Thank you. We have one speaker for item 15.03, and so it's Ms. Elizabeth Albert.
Not in here?
Okay. Dr. Baugman, give your recommendations.
Yeah, I recommend approval to advertise proposed amendments to School Board Policy 510, Safety and Security of Students, Personnel, and Property, and Law Enforcement Guidelines.
Come forward. You turned in a card for 15.03.
Absolutely. Well, good evening, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Superintendent Dr. Baugman, members of the audience. So I come before you tonight to speak about Board Action Item 15.03, which is Policy 510. And so I wanted to thank Dr. Evans, Dr. Baugman, and the members of the team that met with VIEW to talk about the need to revisit Policy 510. Unfortunately, we know that there is, there are ongoing situations in our classrooms that result in the adults being the recipient of student violence. Physical altercations that unfortunately sometimes lead to permanent disabilities for the employees. So, as a result, after meeting with our wonderful sheriff and speaking with the team, we were able to update this policy to include the language that now allows employees to file police reports in cases of physical violence. So I wanted to say thank you for that, and just acknowledge that collaborative partnership that results in better outcomes for all the employees. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright. You've heard the recommendation of the Superintendent to have someone that'd like to make a motion to approve the Authorization to Advertise Proposed Amendments to School Board Policy 510, Safety and Security of Students, Personnel, and Property, and Law Enforcement Guidelines.
Motion to approve.
Okay, Ms. Brosmer said it just a little ahead of you, so you'd like to second it?
That's fine, second.
Thank you, Mr. Cologne. Okay, so Ms. Brosmer has made the motion. Mr. Cologne has seconded it. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of approving the Authorization to Advertise Proposed Amendments to School Board Policy 510, Safety and Security of Students, Personnel, Property, and Law Enforcement Guidelines, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, it passes unanimously. We are now moving on to item 15.04. Authorization to Advertise Proposed Amendments to School Board Policy 801, Public Participation in School Board Meetings. Mr. Langenbach, I do have some, let's go ahead and hear from the speaker, and then I'll have you explain it. We have one speaker for this, unless you have any other cards. Okay, Ms. Jennifer Kelly, welcome.
Good evening, Board Members, Superintendent Baugman. I want to first thank everyone, and thank you guys for working out, allowing one speaker to speak for one other person and then for themselves. I do appreciate that change. However, the language pertaining to allowing two separate speaking opportunities for non-agenda items is still not clear in the policy. I still feel that we need to keep them for several reasons. One, we are already losing two of the four opportunities a month with removing them from the consent meetings. This forces the public to wait a whole month before having another opportunity to address the board on non-agenda items. Like Ms. Albert demonstrated last meeting, this item, the last time this was addressed, the public may hear something in the meeting after the 6 o'clock time certain opportunity, and they'd want to address it instead of having to wait a month to come back. And Ms. Haynes mentioned last, last time this was addressed, that she said that she would like to hear from the public in the board meetings, have concerns, and have them addressed ASAP, rather than getting lost in an email or having to go to social media. And for these reasons, I ask you to please to continue to allow two opportunities to speak on non-agenda items at the regular school board meeting. One more thing, last time I spoke on this, I asked why the language was changed in the policy from meetings to sessions, and I still haven't had an explanation on that. If so, if someone could address that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. So we've made a number of changes, and what I'd like to do is go through some of them. I will read out where they're part of a sentence that already exists. I'll read the sentence and let you know it's been changed. One of the initial changes we've added will be provided at each regular meeting. Now you see in parenthesis, it says "regular session" or "consent session", that's essentially defining what we mean by "regular meeting". In the next section, which is about public comment, we've added quite a bit. So it begins, "Time for public comment" will be provided, one before approval of the Consent Agenda. Now here is the added language. Public participation for non-agenda items at a certain time during regular session. If additional time is needed for public participation for non-agenda items, time will be provided before the board's final comments at regular- will be provided before the board's final comments at regular session. And then three is the same, before a vote is called on any action item. And four is removed, which is before the board's final comments. As you can see, that's been already placed into subsection two there, so it's really a move. We've added language that says a speaker may speak for himself or herself on behalf of only one person during public participation for non-agenda items, portion of the board agenda. Coming under section two, again, I'll just read it out because it doesn't make sense by itself. Public comment will be allowed at each regular and meeting and struck-out session and consent session of the board at the following times and according to the following schedule. Subsection A, again, similar to above, says regular school board meetings, which has regular session and consent session as a definition of regular school board meetings. A one, we've added to the end of this, time will be provided for public comment on any item on the consent agenda before a vote is called for approval of the consent agenda. And then we've added at regular session and consent session. Subsection two, we have public, we've struck comment, and it is participation for non-agenda items. So that's the title of that section. Again, this is one where we've added language. A total of fifteen minutes will be provided for the public comment on any matter related to education. Now here's the added language, at regular session. So it's any matter related to education at regular session. If additional time is needed, time will be provided before the board's final comments at regular session. Subsection three, which is action items, time will be provided for public comment on any action item on the agenda before a vote is called on that item, and then we've added at regular session. Subsection four is struck, which is speakers before board's comments, time will be provided for public comment before the board's final comments. And again, that's because it has already been addressed in other language. And those are all of the amendments.
Dr. Blackman, you have a recommendation.
Madam Chair, I recommend approval to advertise proposed amendments to school board policy eight zero one, which is public participation in school board meetings.
Board members, is there anyone that wishes to discuss anything? Ms. Brosmer.
I still wrestle with this because I'm inclined to agree that we don't want to limit opportunities for public comment. And as a personal observation, I also sympathize because I didn't expect that when we went to our new system, board members were going to lose an opportunity for comment because we don't have that anymore during the workshop meetings. So as we continue to limit public comment, I agree that we have many opportunities. We do. But I still wrestle with this. I'm going to support it with the proviso that if it doesn't seem as though it's playing out well, I may ask for it to be revisited.
Anyone else?
This is rare, but I'm not support, I'm still not supporting it because I still would, if people come here, I'd still much rather hear them speak. And I have said that from day one, and I've been saying it for a long time. If I have to listen to a hundred people, I'd much rather sit here and listen to a hundred people than hear about it on social media. So I won't be supporting it, Mr. Cologne.
I have a question for you. So what in this is limiting people from speaking?
So if they're not here ahead of six P M. to submit a card to speak.
They could speak at the end because we were doing five at the beginning, and that might, let just make sure I'm understanding this right. We're doing five at the beginning and then any remaining cards at the end of the meeting.
But also, we have seen where people have been here and they've heard things come up and they've wanted to, I had no problem with, okay, we have speak on the consent items, speak on the standalone action items. We had the six P M. time, sometimes we take up to ten at six P M. We've done that. But we've also had the end of the evening for people to speak. And we now said that that's just one continual piece instead of two. Here's my thing, whatever time someone can get here and we can allow them the opportunity to speak, I still would much rather hear them speak than not speak.
So are you saying that support of this is saying that they can't speak?
No, but you've limited that it can, it could only, okay, I don't expect to be here. And so whoever's going to sit here may say, I'm only doing five at six P M. You know how I feel. I try to do up to ten if that's all we have. And then I come back at the end and I've allowed people to speak on another topic. Because sometimes when they come, they have more than one thing they need to speak on. And I would still rather hear it in this room than on social media. But that's my feeling. I don't respond to things on social media.
So we're not limiting people's ability to speak. We're limiting their time to speak. Okay.
Yes.
Do I misunderstand, clarify this for me, please. It was my understanding that one of the sticking points was that we were removing the public comment for non-agenda items during workshops.
No, we've never had them during workshops. When we took, when, when the decision was made that we moved to one board meeting because there was a decision with the majority wanting to move to one board meeting instead of having two, but we're now at one regular board meeting and one consent. I still thought at consent, they would be allowed to speak. And we removed all of the speaking at consent unless you're speaking on a consent item.
And that is how it used to be done?
It used to be, we had two regular board meetings.
Right.
And people had up to four opportunities to speak. They could speak on the, well, you may have more than that for consent because if you want to speak on three consent items, you can speak on three. If you want to speak on each action item, you can speak on each action item. And then we had some people that spoke as in the first five to ten cards, depending on what we allowed, at six P M. And then we had individuals come back. But right now, we're down to they can only speak one time a month, which is on the regular board meeting, which we're now calling a regular session. Because on consent, the only way they can speak on the second meeting of the month is they can only speak on whatever items are listed under consent. So that means if they want to speak before the board, they have to wait till the following month to come back. So right now, we're in October. Tonight, people can speak. The next meeting in October, they can only speak on the consent pieces. And then they'll have to wait till November. November, there's only one meeting, and December, there's only one meeting because of the holidays. So, but when we get to January, we'll be back to they can only speak at the first meeting and not speak at the second. So we're asking people to wait an entire month to speak. And that's when I find they tend to go to social media and speak.
Okay, in that case, then you did confirm for me that I do find that to be a sticking point, so I will not be supporting this. Because I know how I feel, only having one opportunity to speak now.
Go ahead, Mr. Cologne.
So I'll make a motion that we table this until we're a complete board because it's going to likely, and again, we, this is the third time we've beat this up. And so I'll make a motion that we table this until we're a complete board.
Ms. Thompson, push the button, speak, yes.
Can I, he's made a motion, so should we address that and then I speak?
Second.
Okay. Can I just?
But we have a motion by Mr. Cologne. We have a second, my, Ms. Brosmer, but you still have an opportunity to say anything you'd like.
And I just, I, because you're right, we have beaten this up for a really long time. So I just, so we're on the same page since we're clarifying everything. At a regular session, someone, let's say one person, could speak on any consent that they want. They can speak at either the six P M. slot or at the end, and they can speak on up to all action items, correct? Okay, so they can't, okay, so just want to clarify that. So that no one thought that it was just like the six P M. or consent item or action item or consent, so just making sure we have.
Anytime we're going to vote on anything, whether we're voting it as a slate under the consent or we're voting them a single action, anyone can fill out a card.
Just making sure.
And even under consent, just like tonight, we pulled different things. They can choose to speak on more than one item under consent, and they could speak on each action item.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
But we took away any ability to speak from the second meeting each month that we're calling the consent session. You can only speak on the consent items.
Thank you.
And that's why I have voted no every time that this has come up. So I guess if I wasn't clear before, that's as clear as I can be. Any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion to table this discussion till a later date, and we have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it's tabled. So now, we are at public participation time. Ms. Johnson, do you have any more cards? No? Okay. So give me just one minute. This is the last item of the evening prior to board members speaking. I will go in order of how they were received. I will name the first speaker and the second speaker so that the second speaker is ready to move up as the first speaker finishes. Please understand, you have three minutes. When you're standing there speaking, you can see the time clock. We ask that you honor the time clock, that when it goes off, would you please wrap up what you're saying and stop speaking? Those of you in the audience, if you do not have your cell phone silenced, please silence it at this time out of the courtesy of those that are coming to speak. Also, there's no, there is no clapping, commenting, anything while someone is speaking. They get their time. If you agree with them, you can do a thumbs up or jazz hands. If you disagree, you can do a thumbs down. But during this time, each speaker will have three minutes. So we will start off, number one tonight is Robert Sabatino. Number two is Karen Weinrich. Welcome, Mr. Sabatino.
Good evening. I am here as a witness, a witness to what happens when dedication meets callous neglect. All of you have seen and heard the accolades. You saw the backslapping and the cheers. Our district secured an A. rating. This year, my school achieved an eighty-four percent pass rate on the U. S. History E O C., the highest pass rate ever in Volusia. Let me tell you the cost of that eighty-four percent. On January second, two thousand twenty-three, my mother was diagnosed with stage four lung cancer. For seventeen months, I taught my students while juggling my own health, her emotional well-being, and every brutal physical need she had. I used my F M L. strategically to ensure my school was prepared for that test. May twenty twenty-three, we hit seventy-eight percent, which at the time was the highest pass rate for Volusia County. And what was the reward after that? The same tired, empty instruction. Can you do better next year? And when, and, but I kept going. Fast forward to the spring, two thousand twenty-four, still on F M L. caring for my mother, working half-days, drained, exhausted, but we both were still fighting. She was fighting for her life. I was fighting for my career. I was begging my mother, the woman I loved, just hold on until May ninth, which was the day of the E O C. She didn't make it. She passed away on May fifth. As I was planning her funeral, I was still talking to my students, still checking in, still making sure they had what they needed to pass the test. We delivered an eighty-two percent. We broke our own record, and we got your A. rating for the school as well. And last year, we got eighty-four percent. How did the district repay that devotion? They forced me to use my own sick time for bereavement. This year, they offered hollow applause and our pass rate, for our pass rate and A. rating, and delivered the same soulless mandate. What can you do better this year? But you know what's truly disgusting? The sight of the board giving the superintendent their only employee who doesn't even have a real evaluation, a nine percent raise, while the district is tossing us a pathetic, insulting one point five percent. It's having to fight for human compassion, pay bereavement, the cabinet for the superintendent sitting disconnected from the classrooms, making two to four times more than the teachers that actually got the A. rating. You're not valuing our work. You are simply exploiting our work, our dedication. You sign N D. A.'s to hide the truth and to run your communication channels like a personal propaganda machine. You dedicated your personal vanity and ego on social media is petty, and passive aggressive emails to staff about this bargaining process are the only things transparent about this board, and it screams that you are failed leaders. You sit idly by blaming teachers for being keyboard warriors while you accept the district's spin as truth. I am here to make you remember the human cost. We are not data points for your social media post. I am here for my mother, and I am here for me. We will not just do better, we will demand better.
Thank you. Next up, Ms. Karen Weinrich, followed by Mr. Cameron Wing. Welcome, Ms. Weinrich.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Karen Weinrich. I'm a fourth grade teacher at Spruce Creek Elementary School. I've been teaching here for twenty-three years and have been a member of the union throughout my career. This past week, I was privileged to attend the Florida Education Association's delicate assembly held in Orlando. To my delight, our keynote speaker was Gary Brooks. Now, if you haven't heard of Gary Brooks, he is a principal currently serving in Kentucky who makes humorous videos about public schools. Anybody in education from custodians all the way up to district administrators can relate to these videos. If you haven't seen them yet, I suggest you search for him on social media. It will make your day. While his speech included plenty of humor, he was primarily a motivational speaker. His motto is to treat everyone with dignity and respect. To me, that means acknowledging everyone's inherent worth as individuals, valuing their feelings and perspectives, and treating them with kindness and consideration regardless of their background. In order to accomplish this, Gary emphasized the importance of making connections with others and finding common ground. In one of his recent videos, he had an excellent idea. He suggests that everyone working at the county level substitute in schools two days a month. You know we're always short on substitutes. Those who don't have teaching certificates could help in the office, cafeteria, even the car loop. Imagine the bridges that could be built. Not only would those substituting get to experience firsthand the challenges of those working in the schools that we face daily, those working in the schools would also have a better understanding of the challenges district staff faces. As a bonus, this would save the district money in substitutes and help the substitute shortage. I hope you seriously consider my suggestion. I can't imagine a better way of understanding others than spending just two days a month in their shoes while making new connections at the school level. In this divided society in which we live in our country, it's not popular to try to understand others' points of view. Volusia County Schools has the opportunity to take the lead in building bridges, learning from others, and recognizing the contributions of all employees in our school system. It's a big ask, but I think it would also have huge payoffs. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I just want to point out for those listening at home that the gentleman before, as he walked out, said that one of our administrators can suck his dick. And so because not everybody could hear that, it's important that everybody know that that just happened. Because what you saw there, though it was very, I was empathetic, I, I can't imagine, okay, we are all responsible for our actions, and that was uncalled for. And so what's going to happen when this is done, and people are going to say, well, why did that happen? Oh, my God, it's because he spoke. No, it's not because he spoke. It's because he was disrespectful. And we're being respectful here. And so I'm just calling that out for everybody at home to hear that. Because I certainly hope that will be addressed.
Well, I will tell you that that comment, I am going to add to that, was completely unprofessional.
So.
Completely unprofessional. So let's be clear about that.
Sorry, thank you.
I have something I'd like to add. In all the time that I've served on this board, I have sat in this boardroom as far as up to two thirty in the morning during COVID and times like that. And every time I've sat here and said, I am happy to hear what anyone has to say. I take phone calls at times where people, when I answer the phone, are yelling on the other end and using profanity. Profanity is something that I personally do not use, and that is how I was raised, and I'm not going to change. But what I say to any individual who I take a phone call from, who is yelling and using profanity, I say to them very nicely when they finally take a break. I am happy to have a discussion with you. I am happy to hear what you have to say.
I am happy to hear what you have to say. However, I do not have to listen to someone screaming profanity at me on a phone." And I tell them, "When you choose to stop yelling and cursing at me, then I will be happy to listen to you." And I will say ninety-nine percent of the time, the person calms down, and we have a nice conversation. And I've had several of them at the end say to me, "So the next time I call, will you take my phone call?" And I have said, "Yes, but you know what the rules are now." Because I don't yell at people. It's not, I didn't yell at my students as a teacher, and I do not use profanity. But what is disheartening to me, and it was brought to my attention, because, believe it or not, no matter what you do on social media, even if you have, think you have your social media blocked to only friends or whatever, people screenshot what's put on social media, and they send it in, okay? And so, I want to say this about this tonight, and I think everybody knows even by that policy. I have voted every time I have voted no to taking away any form of public input. I truly want to hear from you, and I believe everybody on this board wants to hear from you also. But there were messages put out, I guess all weekend and even today, that we were trying to take your First Amendment right away. Your First Amendment right is you filling out a card and us listening to you speak for three minutes. No one's taken this away from you tonight. We never have. Even during COVID, when people wanted to put limits on how many ti, how many cards we would listen to, I always said, "I'll stay. I'll listen to whatever you have to say." Because I believe if I don't listen, then we can't figure out what the issue is and a way to solve it. So I truly feel that if you're going to write things on social media, this is why I don't answer anything on social media. If you only tell one side of a story, or you push the true facts, and they're no longer facts, or you push it to like, throw a grenade for shock and awe, what are we doing? Each and every one of you sitting in here, to the best of my knowledge, we may have some guests that are not, you're an employee of Volusia County Schools. You're teachers. You stand in front of kids every day. And I will tell you, when I get, when I'm told that the people at home have called in and said they can't hear the meeting every time the door opens, what's being gained by that? If you had students that stood out your, outside your classroom, and that's what they did, I know none of you would appreciate that. So please know, we want to hear from you, but there's a right way. And we're adults, and we should set examples for our students. So even tonight, when we started this meeting, and we had students sitting here in this audience, that were going to be honored for the work that they had done and the awards that they had earned, we owed them the right to be appreciative and not cause a scene for them. Because every time the door opened, they were sitting right there. That's what they heard. So, we're gonna continue, and I hope that we can continue in a professional way. So, up next is Mr. Cameron Wing, followed by Ms. Vrenelle Spar. Welcome, Mr. Wing.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board Members, Superintendent Dr. Balgobin. Tomorrow, our schools will observe Unity Day, a day when we wear orange to stand united against bullying and to celebrate acceptance for all. But there's a truth that often goes unspoken. Teachers themselves are frequently the targets of bullying. Some educators go above and beyond to support their colleagues, even when their own emotional reserves are depleted. Others, unfortunately, contribute to the problem by mistreating their peers. I've personally experienced this. And what the public is beginning to recognize is that bullying doesn't just come from students or coworkers. It can come from the very institutions meant to support us. Let me be clear, I'm not referring to principals. Mine is exceptional, supportive, understanding, and deeply committed to our well-being. I'm talking about the district leadership, the ones in the high castle. Emotional bullying or psychological abuse involves repeated behaviors. Words, actions, or gestures intended to manipulate, control, or diminish someone's emotional well-being. It erodes confidence, self-worth, and mental health. In some cases, physical health. It's hard not to see the hypocrisy when the district piles on stress. Larger class sizes, shifting curriculum, relentless testing, increased responsibilities and changes to insurance, only to follow up with emails about health and wellness. These gestures ring hollow when they come from the very source of our anxiety. To praise us for achieving A district status, then offer a mere one and a half percent raise to the educators who made it possible is not just insulting, it's gaslighting. We are exhausted. We are disrespected, and we are paying attention. Here's the reality. If future teachers know they won't be valued, they won't stay. So please, spare us the wellness platitudes. Respect is the foundation of well-being, and right now, that's what's missing.
Thank you. Next up is Vrenelle Spar, followed by Valerie Jessup. Welcome, Mrs. Spar.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board Members, Dr. Balgobin. I am Vrenelle Williams Spar. I am a teacher at Turi T. Small. This is, I, actually, this is my twenty-seventh year at Turi T. Yes, we have a new building, and from the beginning, I went around the campus to check different areas of the school. I physically went to every corner of the school. Every area that was, there was a problem, I marked it, I sent it in to let everyone know. I sent it to everyone sitting up there, along with Mr. Cash, to let you know what areas needed to be modified, corrected. And a lot of things were said, "Oh, the students this, the students this." Every area that I sent you was adult. The shoddy work that was done. We have leaks, the windows are leaking. We have our playground, for a whole month, we had tadpoles, everything, that the kids could not play on the playground. Our kids need to get that energy out in a safe environment. They can't. We don't have grass. We have a little bit more than we did last year, but you can see the dirt. It was suggested that, hey, take the kids out there and let them pick up the rocks, the glass, as a fun activity. You would not say that to a student at Tamoka, at Pine Trail, at Pathways, or Sweetwater. That would not be said. I said I would wait. I talked to Ms. Goodrich. I talked to Ms. Brosmer and said, "I will wait until after Labor Day before I came to the school board to give everyone time to fix some things." Because that's what was said. Over the summer, we're going to do some things. They did not start painting the school until schools started back. Kids were on campus, they were painting in the afternoon. You had a whole, what, eight weeks to paint? And now, we're back at the beginning of the school year, and yet, a lot of the things that should have been taken care of have not. They've been tried to be covered up. We have black mold. We have black mold. The doors to the cafeteria, they came and put more caulking around it so you could not see that the whole frame moves when you open the doors. But I still see it, because I check it. And I still have gone around, and I'm still checking, and some of the areas that I spoke about last year, they're still not corrected. I actually took the fire extinguishers last year, because they set them in the box without them being put in. Just the glass and the fire extinguisher. Thank you.
Next up is Ms. Valerie Jessup, followed by Gwen, is it Coy?
Coy, like the fish, is what she said.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Valerie, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the teachers, paraprofessionals, office specialists, and our new brothers and sisters, the custodians, guardians, schoolway cafe teams, transportation staff, maintenance crews, warehouse workers, and others. We are the people who keep this district running, the ones who open the doors, teach the lessons, prepare the meals, drive the buses, repair the buildings, move the supplies, and care for the students who fill them. We are also the ones who work inside these schools through every challenge and every long day to put our district, to help our district earn its grade of an A. This grade did not come from policies or paperwork alone, it came from people. Every teacher, para, custodian, bus driver, maintenance worker, and staff member who showed up and gave their best, even when resources were limited and paychecks stretched way too thin. But dignity requires more than gratitude. It requires fair pay. Too many of our employees work full-time jobs and still struggle to make ends meet. Might I just add, I have three jobs, and I'm going to school as a student as well. Ask me when I sleep. We should not have to sacrifice our dignity to serve our community. When you invest in our staff, you invest in our students. Fair pay builds stability, respect, and pride. And that pride carries straight into the classroom, onto the buses, through the cafeteria, and across every campus in this district. We are not asking for luxury. We are asking for fairness, for the ability to live with dignity while we do the work that defines our schools. Tonight, we ask the board to stand with us, the teachers, paraprofessionals, office specialists, custodians, guardians, schoolway cafe teams, transportation workers, maintenance crews, the warehouse staff, and others, and to affirm that dignity begins with fair pay. Thank you.
Thank you. Gwen Coy, followed by Julie Hilburn. Welcome, Ms. Coy.
Good evening. My name is Gwendolyn Coy. I'm a school counselor, and I'm here today, and I've been with Volusia County for thirty-four years. I'm here today to just ask you to really look at us. You know, look around the room, see all of these people that are here. It takes all of us together to make this county work, to make these, this school work. We are, we're more than a number on a spreadsheet, we're more than a data point. See the people. We're the people that show up every day to make sure our students have clean schools, that make sure that our students are safe, those that make sure our buildings are safe, the ones that make sure students arrive to school safely and in safe buses. Those that serve healthy meals, those that provide invaluable assistance to teachers, and those that provide instructions to ensure that our students are ready for the future. We are here not just for our students, but for our own kids. My, my children are products of Volusia County School, and many of us in this room have children that go to Volusia County Schools. Our own children that attend public schools throughout Volusia County. We show up every day. We're here, we're doing the work, and I would like for you to really, really see us and get to know who we are. We have children, we're working multiple jobs. So, we show up every day for them. We show up with dignity so that they will learn dignity and be able to go out into the world and lead with dignity. We are asking that you treat us with dignity. We are worth more than one and a half percent.
Next up is Julie Hilburn, followed by Susan Holbrook. Welc, welcome, Ms. Hilburn.
Good evening. Good evening, members of the board, Madam Chair and Superintendent Dr. Balgobin. Sorry, I'm short. As a kindergarten teacher, I come to you not only as an educator, but as somebody who pours her heart, time, and energy into shaping the very foundation of our community's future. Each morning, I welcome fifteen bright, curious little faces into my classroom, children who are just beginning to discover what it means to learn, to share, to solve problems, and to be kind human beings. I take that responsibility with deep pride and love, because I know that what happens in these early years lays the groundwork for everything that follows. Teaching kindergarten is so much more than ABCs and 1-2-3s. It's helping a child learn how to navigate big emotions, to celebrate the small victories, and to feel safe and valued in a world that's still very new to them. It's staying late to prepare lesson plans that will spark excitement, spending weekends creating materials that meet every learner's needs, and constantly reflecting on how I can do better for them. My colleagues and I give our whole selves to this work because we believe in it. But it's becoming harder to sustain that same passion when our paychecks don't reflect the rising costs of simply living. A one point five percent raise does not meet the cost of living adjustment. It doesn't cover the increase in groceries, rent, healthcare, or even the materials we often buy for our own classrooms out of our own pockets. We are being asked to prepare children for life, to help them grow into responsible, compassionate citizens, yet many of us are struggling to make ends meet in our own lives. We do this work because it matters, but love and dedication alone cannot pay pills, cannot pay bills, or support families. When compensation fails to keep up with inflation, it sends the message that the value of our work and the future we're helping to build is somehow negotiable. That message hurts not just financially, but emotionally. I urge you to look beyond the numbers on a spreadsheet and see the people behind them, the teachers who show up every day with open hearts and endless determination. We're not asking for luxury, we're just asking for fairness. A raise that reflects the real cost of living is not just an investment in the educators, it's an investment in our students, our schools, and our community's future. I'm grateful for your time, and I hope for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Susan Holbrook, followed by Pamela Hopewell. Welcome, Mrs. Hopewell.
Thank you. I believe I'm speaking, I have two cards. I'm speaking also for Ms. Giles.
I just go by the, hang on. I have you, I have you also for number ten.
For hers? Okay.
I also have you for number ten, so are you speaking? I, number ten says Amanda Giles, so this is for yourself.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. Good evening, everyone. I am Susan Holbrook. I teach at Mainland High School. This is my twenty-fifth year teaching and my twentieth year in Volusia County. As a union steward, I was inspired to share stories from across the district. I asked my colleagues, "If you could say one thing to the board and the superintendent, what would you say?" So many couldn't say just one thing, but I'll read as many of these as I can in my allotted time. This is from a veteran teacher who was just hired from outside of our district. She said, "As a veteran teacher of eighteen years, I have never seen a classroom so woefully unprepared for me. I have no printer, no paper, no phone, no supplies of any kind. My walls had graffiti, which I had to paint during pre-planning before students got here. This is unacceptable, and I've never seen anything like it. I'm truly dumbfounded." I have one class period with sixty students in, in person and nineteen online that I don't see. There are four different subjects being taught in this class simultaneously. This is not what's best for students. Class sizes are too large. How should I respond when my child asks if I'd encourage him to work for an organization that valued him the way that Volusia County values me? Truthfully, I would say absolutely not. Today, if you ask students, "Who wants to be a teacher?", when they get older, not one person wants to. Why would they? Money talks. As teachers, we live near poverty, well, expected to give, give, give. Enough? I want to feel valued. Behavior, discipline, pay. We deserve more of a raise. I wish I didn't have three roommates so I can make my rent. Teachers should not have to worry about whether they pay their utility bills or buy food for their families. A livable working wage with a COLA aligned to the cost of living is a necessity, not a luxury. My adult son thought I was lying about my pay and yelled at me for Ms. My adult son thought I was lying about my pay and yelled at me for mismanaging my money. Then I showed him my pay stub, he was appalled. We both wonder why I continue to work here, given the disrespect this conveys. I have an advanced degree, but I don't get paid for it, so instead, I have to work five jobs to make ends meet. Please tell them that I have to sell my plasma to pay my bills. Please tell them I wish I could sell my plasma for grocery money, but I can't do this due to my cancer treatments. It doesn't have to be this way, trust your teachers, then respect your teachers. Dignified work deserves dignified pay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mrs. Pamela Hopewell, and then Ms. Holbrook, you will be back to speak, following her for Amanda. Is Pamela Hopewell here in the room? Okay. Then Ms. Holbrook, you're back up. I apologize for that.
I'm sharing this for a colleague that I thought was going to be presented two weeks ago, but with the change, I wasn't able to present. So I'm here to share her concerns because she's with her family this evening. Dear Volusia County School Board members, I am a second-year, third, second-career, third-year teacher. This is my second teaching assignment, sorry, I apologize. This is my second year teaching the same science class. At the time of this writing, as it changes constantly, I currently have two-hundred-and-two students, a decrease from two-hundred-and-thirty-seven at the beginning of the year, sixty-two of which are ESE, three have a 504 plan, and five are ELL. This is an average of ten specialized students per class period. Every class is support facilitated, and the facilitator comes in twice a week, as she also supports other teachers. I've already had a parent complain that I'm not helping her ESE student enough. I have twenty-eight desks and eight lap tables, the room is cramped and stuffy, and the students complain frequently about it. Admittedly, I brought my concerns to administration three weeks ago, and they did move ten students from my roster a week and a half later. But my classes shouldn't have been allowed to get this large and have seventy students requiring accommodations. More students mean more grading, more time addressing student and parent concerns, more students that need extra help, and more documentation. I have left healthcare, a higher-paying job, by twenty thousand dollars with better pay where I strictly worked forty hours and was less stressed. I left because I started to feel less like I was making a difference and more like I was just part of a, another part of a broken system. How much thinner can I spread myself before I feel that way about education too? I work outside my contract hours, evenings and weekends, at least six days a week, due to the workload, and this limits the time I can spend with my family. To make an impossible job a little more possible, please implement restrictions on class sizes and limit the number of students on rosters who require extra accommodations and documentation. Please provide more time for planning, grading, and documentation. Yes, teaching is a calling, but it shouldn't be at the expense of overloading our class sizes. This is a large part of why teachers are leaving the profession. Thank you, Amanda Giles.
Next up is Drew Hilburn, followed by Cody Whittington. Welcome, Mr. Hilburn.
Thank you, nice to talk to you. I'm just going to tell you a little bit about, about my story. I know there are so many others, and most of those stories are, are much more saddened than mine, but just a little bit about myself. I started teaching in Volusia County in nineteen ninety-four. Taught for several years, wonderful staff members, I grew so very much underneath the tutelage of Mr. Huth, of Kathy Colwell. Some of these individuals still are profoundly affecting my teaching today. I had an opportunity to travel out west, and I went out to Lake Washington, Seattle area. There, I started teaching at a junior high. The difference between those school districts, Volusia County and there, was, was massive. It was, it was a cultural shock and an adjustment. One of the things I found was it was a much easier teaching experience, not necessarily more rewarding. There is a difference between those things. The pay out in Seattle was a little bit more than the pay I made here, but not too substantially more, the cost of living was more too. I met my wife, you've just listened to her. I encouraged her to come back to Florida so I could be with my family. As we came back, we obviously took a little bit of a pay cut. She took a ten thousand dollar pay cut, I took a seven thousand dollar pay cut. This seems reasonable for the, for the lifestyle that we wanted. That was in two thousand and six, so we've been here twenty years since then. And in that particular time, I have seen many adjustments to Volusia County. Steps being removed, pandemic issues surfacing, security issues being implemented, these have all added difficulties to our teaching experiences. But let me just talk about what was the real transition when we talk about the financial aspect. When I came back here, I was making forty-three thousand dollars. Now I'm making about fifty-three thousand, ten thousand dollars increase. A colleague of mine up in Washington came down to St. Augustine and was visiting, we had an opportunity to share stories and talk about the differences of what we've experienced over the last twenty years. My colleague right now is making a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in Lake Washington. This kind of desperate, desperate difference in, in pay boggles my mind in some particular ways. I certainly understand the differences in geography and the differences in the way all of that works. But when you just look at the cost of living changes, for the twenty years that I have been back, sixty percent inflation since two thousand and six, there have been lots of things that have happened, but yet, my pay has not caught up with that at all. I, I, I'm not arguing that I need to be paid more and more and more and more. I'm not, I'm not trying to make that argument, I think that's a very sad argument. We have tight budgets, they are difficult to make, I understand these particular things. But you also have to understand, I have lost real buying power at the time that I have been back at Volusia. When I first went up there, the differences in pay were marginal, but now these differences are tremendous. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Holbrook. Cody Whittington, followed by Elizabeth Albert. Welcome, Mr. Whittington.
Good evening. I'm a teacher at Deltona High School. This will be my fifth year as a teacher for Florida Public Schools and my fourth year teaching at Volusia County Schools. I have a master's degree in history, and I have been teaching social studies my entire career. I am proud of the work I've done, I'm proud of the students I've taught, I'm proud of the difference that I've made in my community as a teacher. I am proud to be a teacher. But pride doesn't keep my family fed. Pride doesn't, pride doesn't keep the lights on or the water running, and right now, teaching doesn't do that either. Members of the board, can you see the marks on my arms from where I've been selling plasma twice a week to pay my bills? Can you hear my stomach growling? Because I haven't eaten today, because the food bank that keeps my fridge full is only open Thursday mornings. Every month, my family and I struggle to keep our head above water, and far too often, it's not enough. And while we struggle financially, I don't even have the benefit of being able to leave my work at work, to go home and be with my family, to take care of my own mental well-being, hours upon hours, every night, lesson planning, grading, paperwork, for classes that have far too many students and not nearly enough time or support to get everything done that needs to get done within my contractual hours. I am tired in every sense of the word. I am tired of more responsibilities being piled onto the shoulders of me and my colleagues without proper compensation to match. I am tired of the disrespect I receive from every party associated with teaching, this board included. I am tired of not having enough, enough time, enough support, and enough money. I am tired that we have been being told, me and all of my fellow teachers being told constantly, that we are not worth it. That is the message that has been sent and continues to be sent, not just here at Volusia County, but across Florida and the United States in general. And after years of being told how little we matter, how many more years are we going to endure hearing that before we have had enough? When is it going to happen that those in power realize that I am, we all are, worth far more than 1.5%?
Madam Chair, can I ask for a moment of personal privilege before you start the clock? Just a moment, very brief. Okay, can I say who's going to be next after you? Ruby Baker will follow Ms. Albert.
Thank you, very brief. So as the president of the Volusia United Educators, and as the elected leader of the individuals in this room tonight who came to speak their truth to you as a board, Mr. McAuliffe, I apologize to you. I've known you for a very long time, through the good, the bad, and the ugly, and you didn't deserve that. So as the president of you, you have my most sincere apology. You're welcome. We will take the actions that we need to take as well, so we'll just, now I'll start. So good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Dr. Baugman. In a time when the whole world seems to be upside down, where what used to be right is now considered wrong, and where public schools have become the deep pocket or funding source for subpar education schemes designed to make a few individuals rich at the expense of our students, now more than ever, our teachers and staff need to be the number-one priority of this school district. Each of you sitting on this board carries a personal responsibility for the decisions that you make. Your votes, your policies, your priorities define the working and private lives of thousands of people. The weight of those choices extends far beyond budget spreadsheets, they reach directly into the classrooms, offices, and the living rooms of the eight thousand employees of this district. Your employees are working harder than ever, yet they are struggling to make ends meet. Wages are low, respect feels conditional, and the people who made VCS an A-rated district are reaching their breaking point. Teachers and staff have skills, talents, and gifts that they freely give to their students. They are called to prepare children for an ever-changing world, to equip them with knowledge, confidence, and compassion. That calling should be recognized, honored, and respected with actions that reflect your commitment to dignity and respect for all employees. However, we know that as a state, Florida is ranked fiftieth in the nation for average teacher pay. In the central Florida region, we know by the AFR data from last year that Volusia County Schools' allocation for instructional salaries is the second lowest in our central Florida area, only just above the allocation provided by Lake County Schools. Yet Lake County Schools offers a starting salary that is slightly above Volusia County. The current base salary offered by VCS is not competitive with surrounding districts. VCS trails behind others by five to six thousand dollars within the central Florida area. As the employer, you have the power and the responsibility to change the narrative, you have a decision to make. If we want to retain great people, we must invest in them, not just with words, but with actions. If we want our students to continue to excel, we must invest in teachers and staff. If we want VCS to remain an A, we must make sure that the best people are trying to get in, not trying to get out. I ask you to think deeply about your employees. This district does not run without our support staff, they are the backbone of VCS. Our instructional personnel are worth far more than 1.5% for the work they do to increase student achievement. You can do better. Prioritize your people, invest in those doing the work, and restore dignity to the employees who make our public schools the best place to educate the children of Volusia County. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Ruby Baker, followed by Alexandra, is it Hemmy? Okay, thank you. Welcome.
Hello. My substitute teaching started in Guam. Then I traveled to Florida, and I was substituting, I started substituting for Volusia County in twenty twenty-three, in April. And I subbed until the June of twenty twenty-four, when I had personal reasons, I had to take a year break. They said that it would be no problem, I'd just come back and reapply, or what have you. So I started reapplying June fifteenth, and they told me, okay, no problem. They saw I was in a computer, I guess, and they said, well, we need your high school diploma. I said, okay, so I sent that. They said, we need this, I said, okay, I'll send that. So then they said, well, you need to be vetted. I'm like, okay, tell me what I need to do, I'll get vetted. So Friday, September seventeenth, application is vetted, yay! And it just told me, you know, any school that you've applied for now can view your application, interview, interview for, for interview purposes. And so I let all three schools in Port Orange know that I was vetted and I was ready, and they were calling me back, and September twenty-second, I got a note, I, I went in and it said, your account has been deactivated. So I knew they were getting new system October first. So I thought, okay, October first, is it going to be a new system? So I'll wait till October first. So I waited until October first, actually, I waited till October sixth. And on October sixth, when I tried to put, you know, my new information, because they said, well, after October first, you got to start again, I said, no problem. So I went to start again, it said, your social security has already been provided, it's already in use. So my social security was already in use, I said, okay. Then I start getting, three schools called me that week, and at no prevail, it, for some reason, it didn't go through, and so, I'm ready to start working tomorrow for substituting. So if I could get, you know, this, I don't know why it won't take my social security, I know that it's a new system, but please, somebody call IT, I'm ready to start working tomorrow and helping the teachers out. I want to help you guys out, okay? Thanks, guys.
Next up Alexandra Hemmy, followed by Jamie Miller. Welcome.
Good evening. Your answer to overcrowded classrooms was to eliminate our primary ESE unit and have that teacher become a Gen Ed teacher. As a result, all five ESE grade levels are in one class. As you know, in VE Mild, we follow the same exact curriculum at the same pace as Gen Ed. Our curriculum maps are identical to Gen Ed. Our students are placed in VE Mild because they require extra academic support to be able to succeed. However, these students can end up receiving less instruction under a licensed teacher than our students in general education due to the scheduling nightmare of having too many grades in one class. The limited amount of time is not enough for the deep engagement required to master new concepts, yet the curriculum maps march on, forcing us to build a house with no foundation. Before the elimination of the primary ESE unit, our intermediate unit had just two grade levels. Our schedule worked out perfectly, our children were growing. Now that we have five grade levels with completely different needs, our schedule doesn't allow for everyone's needs to be met. As a one-to-one para, I'm on the schedule to teach during the day, and the other paras are providing core instruction reserved for licensed teachers to make it work. If my one-to-one student has needs while I'm scheduled to teach, that group of children simply doesn't receive instruction. One of our paras must teach two grade levels of science at once using her iPad, but educators can't log into two grades at once on one device, so students are literally waiting in line for their turn to learn. Combine all of this with competing noises of separate groups trying to teach simultaneously with students who have audio processing and sensory issues. This is the opposite of a supportive learning environment despite working with an amazing team. We also have a kindergartner, oh, two kindergartners starting today, and a first grader going to recess, special area, and lunch with big kids double their size and age, where new and inappropriate behaviors are encouraged by the big kids. These primary students are being robbed of their chance to develop alongside their peers because of money. What is happening is not fair to our students or our staff. More iPad time is not the answer, another para is not the answer. More iPad time is not the answer, another para is not the answer. Our students deserve more time under the instruction of licensed teachers. It is an emergency that we hire more ESC teachers to give our students a fair shot. Please show us that you value all students. And parents, if you're listening, please know how much power you hold. This board values your voice much more than mine, a paraprofessional still earning $15 an hour to do the work of a teacher. We need parents in this fight. Thank you for hearing me.
Next up is Jamie Miller, followed by Dorothy Featherstone. Is Jamie here? Are you Jamie?
I'm here. Good afternoon. Sorry, I wasn't expecting so many people, I apologize.
But welcome.
So we've been in Volusia County recent, or we've been in Volusia County for four years, and I can no longer stay silent about how students with learning disabilities like my son are being failed with ESE. My son's a high school freshman this year, he's on a NAEP. He had a permanent teacher for two weeks. They took that teacher away, they gave her to a higher learning class, and he was left with a substitute, a different one that changed daily. We were notified on Open House about this. I spoke with the principal herself, who then called me the next day, promised me we're gonna move my son up, and it's, we're gonna have to work on this together. Unfortunately, there was an issue, there was no follow-up again. He didn't get moved, we emailed, we emailed, we emailed. I emailed again on September 29th asking for updates. We exchanged several messages, my husband finally sent an email on October 3rd. She never responded. We found out my son's class was changed by my son. So Deltona High School, or Deland High School is actually failing students, and it's becoming way too much. And with the ESC students, it's been math and all through heritage too, math teacher with substitute, second math teacher, she didn't speak English, but she could speak math, she said. So that has always constantly been a struggle. Sorry, I'm freezing. So we're, I, I'm not gonna quit fighting for my son and other children in the school system that are getting the bare minimum for ESE students, and why teachers are being given, and I still want an answer why the teacher was given to higher learning students than to be kept with the lower learning students where they were more needed. They deserve a teacher. We've had no communication for them for over four weeks, you can't get a basic response from that school for anything, and it's just become very frustrating. I just wanna talk on the lack of teachers. I want you guys to fill your positions when you have them open and give the kids with ESE a fighting chance to graduate. That's all they need, that's all they want. Thank you for hearing me.
I, I just have to ask one thing, and normally we don't ask anything, but I'm confused, because you said Deltona High and then you said-
Yeah, I, I messed up, he goes to Deltona, he doesn't go to Deland. I work in Deland, so I messed up.
Okay, because you said a female principal, and so that's-
Her name is Jennifer, she's an assistant principal Jennifer.
Okay, so it's Deltona High and an assistant-
Yeah, and I can forge you every single email that's been going back and forth and the lack of response. She was immediately on it, and then she just fell off the face of the map.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, next up is Ms. Dorothy Featherstone, followed by CJ Allen. Welcome, Mrs. Featherstone.
Thank you. Good evening. I listened through all of the bargaining sessions. I paid close attention to the words that your bargaining team used to justify turning down almost every request we made. I heard a lot about how much you appreciated teachers, not just enough, just not enough to pay us what we're asking. What I heard most was a, was not a willingness to listen, but a message, this is what we're offering, take it or leave it. Before teaching, I owned three small businesses. I had employees of my own. So I do understand the tension between cost and profit. I understand what it's like to worry about paying that electric bill. But when one of my employees had the courage to ask for a raise, it takes courage to come up and say, can I get a little bit more? I always gave it to them, because I valued them. They were not just a number on my paycheck, on my payroll. They were the reason my business ran successfully. I hired people who were better than me at things that I couldn't do. I respected their expertise enough to pay them what they deserved. You have hundreds of highly skilled employees in Volusia County who do the same for you guys every single day. Obviously, by that man's upset, he's done way more than he should have. They're experts at their crafts, classrooms, cafeterias, buses, they do the work that keeps the district functioning and our, and our students thriving. At my school alone, I work beside people navigating some really hard strategies, just like that first man, teacher who's just recently diagnosed with Parkinson's, coworker caring for an aging mother, another preparing for back surgery, one grieving the loss of a brother through suicide, one teacher needing a liver transplant, teacher caring for her husband with cancer, staff members who recently survived a heart attack, coworkers raising children with autism, one who's grieving the loss of a miscarriage, and one who just lost her home. These are the people who hold the district together, even while holding their own lives together. You say you value us, but value is proven through actions, not words. Please figure out how to give these teachers what they need, not just to survive, but to plan for their family's future with dignity. That's what you owe them. Thank you.
Next up is CJ Allen.
Well, evening, Board members, Madam Chair, Dr. Balgobin. When I was in elementary school, my father taught me to always recognize the people who do the tough jobs. He was a Baptist minister in a very large church, like 2,800 members to be exact. I remember how he took the time to acknowledge the custodian and the church secretary, as well as the many who volunteered their time for coffee and goodies after the service. He always took time to chat with them despite his busy days and evenings. In return, they put even more effort, purpose, and joy into their jobs. He gave them dignity. We, the teachers, paraprofessionals, office specialists, custodians, guardians, schoolway cafe teams, transportation workers, maintenance crews, and warehouse staff are doing the tough jobs. We are the backbone of the district. Without us, there would be no Volusia County School District. This district's A grade did not come from paperwork alone, it came from people who consistently give it their best. Tonight, I ask this board to stand with us. Dignity begins with fair pay. We are certainly worth more than 1.5%. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that concludes public input. Oh, you have a card, you have more cards? It doesn't conclude it. All right, we're moving on to Speaker number 19. That will be Ms. Jennifer Kelly, followed by Speaker number 20, which is Donovan, is it France? Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening again, Board members, Superintendent Balgobin. Here is an example of needing to keep non-agenda public participation options open, because I heard something since I spoke last time that I need to address with y'all. Let me start. I have seen many unconstitutional things happen in this boardroom. First being, five years ago, I personally was drug out of this room by the Deland Police Department unconstitutionally for wanting to come to my very first school board meeting and address making a policy mandatory for masking, and that's how I was treated, violating my constitutional rights. Another example was in this room, a policy was passed for random searches of everyone without cause, which is the exact opposite wording of the Fourth Amendment. And I had a question with that, when the random searches happened in a classroom, because everyone needed to be searched, were the teachers included? Not that I want any of y'all included in that. Because it's all unconstitutional. Ms. Haynes, this evening, you commented that somebody was saying on social media that First Amendment rights were being violated. That was me, I was that somebody. And they absolutely are. You said there's two sides to every story, so I'm gonna read the second side. I'm gonna read Dr. Evans, who is the school district's attorney, email to view President Ms. Albert. Ms. Albert, it has come to my attention of Volusia County Schools that Volusia United Educators intends to hold a demonstration at the board occurring October 4th, 2025, which is today. Volusia County Schools recognizes your organization's right to engage in public demonstration. However, we must also ensure proper ingress and egress from the district administrative complex, access to the parking facilities, and safety for those involved in the demonstration. Yes, I agree with all of that. As such, there will be a designated, clearly marked area for those who wish to participate in demonstration. That's the first one. This is a taxpayer-funded building, your salaries that you are here working are all taxpayer-funded, we have every right to stand out in front of this building, on a sidewalk, any government space, and hold a rally or demonstration. Then it continues to say, further, as the district administrative complex neighbors residential dwellings, we ask that you not use megaphones, loudspeakers, or any other noise-enhancing devices. And here's the huge insult. Thank you for your understanding and compliance of these restrictions. Not now, not ever. And please read the back of my shirt when I walk away.
Thank you. Next up, Donovan. Can you spell your last name for me?
Yes, it's F-R-A-N, T is in Tom, C is in zebra.
Okay, France, all right.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Donovan France, and I'm here tonight as the husband of a Volusia County teacher who has endured repeated violent assaults in her own classroom. I'm not here out of anger, I'm here out of desperation for her safety and the safety of her students. Over the past nine weeks, my wife has been physically attacked, cursed at, and terrorized by a single fourth-grade student. On multiple occasions, he has thrown textbooks, chairs, and other objects directly at her. He has shoved her, punched her, body-checked her, and even asked her if she had any last words before attempting to tape her mouth. These are not isolated incidents. These are escalating acts of violence that have happened again and again, despite every possible attempt to de-escalate and support this child. She has followed all procedures, called for help, documented every event, and sought administrative intervention, and yet each time, he has returned to her classroom, where she and her students live in fear for the next outburst. On September 2nd, he threw textbooks at her until she fell to the ground and injured her ankle and her neck. On September 15th, he tried to kick her, he body-checked her, and he threatened her. On October 6th, he punched her in the stomach, and just two days later, on October 8th, he was throwing chairs, books, and screaming obscenities, include, include calling her a B-word, and in front of the entire class of children. I've seen the bruises, I've watched her come home in tears, still trying to figure out how to teach and protect 80-plus students, who are, while also protecting herself. This is not acceptable. No teacher in Volusia County or anywhere should ever be assaulted and then forced to face their attacker again. School is supposed to be a sacred place. The Teacher Authority Act gives educators the right to refuse reentry for violent students. My wife exercised that right, and she did so to protect herself and her class, not out of malice, but out of necessity. And while I stand here speaking, tonight speaking for her, I also have two children who attend the same school. I'm deeply concerned about how this may affect them. I worry about retaliation, subtle or otherwise, whether, whether, how they are treated, how they, how they're perceived, how safe they feel walking through those same halls. They are innocent in all of this, and they deserve protection too. Tonight, I'm asking the board to stand behind her decision and not let this child back into our classroom, to send a message to teach, that teachers have the right to teach without the fear of being hit, kicked, or cursed at, and that their families should never have to fear the consequences of standing up for what's right. Please make sure that the systems in place truly protect those who protect our children every day. Thank you for your time and for taking this seriously, not just for my wife, but for every teacher who's afraid to speak up and every family standing beside them.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Amanda France, followed by Vernell Spar. Welcome, Ms. France.
My name is Amanda France. I am the wife, I am the mother, I am the teacher. Every morning, when I step into my classroom and do it with purpose, to teach, to guide, to help shape the next generation, I am not just teaching lessons from a book or checking off benchmarks, I'm teaching what it means to be accountable, to respect one another, and to take pride in what it means to do your best. But in the past nine weeks, that purpose has been tested in ways that I never imagined. I've had to evacuate my classrooms more times than I can count, I've been physically assaulted twice by the same student. I stood between chaos and my students, protecting them from harm. And the hardest part, the fear that's crept in, the fear of walking back into a space that, that once sparked passion, now clouded by anxiety and uncertainty. Teaching is supposed to be inspiring growth and safety, not surviving the day. I am the wife, I am the mother, I am the teacher, and right now, I'm simply trying to hold all of that together. It's time to start listening to the teachers, it's time to demand a safer classroom for students and for the adults who care for them. If you believe in protecting those who dedicate their lives to teaching, speak up, share our stories, ask the questions, because silence can no longer be the answer.
Thank you. Next up is Vernell Spar, followed by Mallory Smith.
I wanted to finish, I know we only get three minutes, but I just wanted to give you all more insight on Terry T. One of the issues we had was our art room floor. I had sent in information over and over again, and then finally the art teacher sent in something, and Mr. Cologne, you responded back to her. And she told you, you were the only one that had responded back to her. Now, she had received the email from, I'm not sure who, whether it was the contractor or project manager, I'm not really sure, but they sent the email back saying that they were going to check with the vendor to determine if the warranty was related to the teacher or, and students doing the damage to the floor, or if it was them doing the damage to the floor. If you come into the classroom, a blind person can see. The kids had, did not have epoxy to be able to put, cover up all the gouges in the floor. But because of the constant emails, the constant pictures, we found out they're gonna be replacing the floor. Finally, they're gonna be replacing the concrete floor, not- Finally, they're gonna be replacing the concrete floor, not sure when, but we keep hearing a lot of things are gonna be replaced. The AC in our school still does not work properly. I have a fan on in my classroom, every day. It's not by the students, it's by me. If anyone knows about hot flashes, we understand. But even without that, when my kids say they're hot, it's hot. And I'm sweating, like just dripping trying to teach. Movement activities with my five- and six-year-olds, still gotta do it, but I'm sweating in the classroom. We have trees that are fallen, that are rotted, they're dead. Our water fountains are hooked to hot water. And the compressors have gone out, the one by my classroom. It finally got replaced, but why is hot water attached to it? Just asking. Certain things that have been, that are on our campus, it makes no sense. It just makes no sense. And I don't understand who, from our district level, was okay with it. And now that everything is said and done, who's paying for all these things now? Are the contractors still paying, or is the district gonna be paying for it? My classroom door, one of them, safety reasons, the door opens, it does not shut because the floor isn't even. I know, I checked, the marble rolls towards the door. Now, they took the bottom of this trim, they cut it off on that side because the door wouldn't open or close. I got on the floor and laid down. They took it off. I know I'm done, but for safety and security, they took it off on that one side.
Mallory Smith, followed by Patricia Randall. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. I wanna start by saying thank you to my family who's here this evening, my mother, my grandmother's in the back of the room, my brother, and my wife. They've done more for my classroom than probably anybody has. My grandmother buys things, more pizza, and my wife, thank you for always scheduling field trips. So my name is Mallory Smith. I'm here representing colleagues that are unable to be here this evening because they're working second jobs, or they're supporting students at sporting events. My roots in Volusia County are deep. I'm actually from Mrs. Thompson's area. We have several generations of New Smyrna High School graduates dating back to the 30s, the 60s, the 80s, and the 2010s. For this district, I've been a lunch lady, extended-day counselor, summer camp counselor, substitute, and for the last eight years, teacher. But the first time I ever felt disrespect was unfortunately sitting across the bargaining table, and I watched as endless pieces of paper with red-struck-through language were being passed back to us. Most weekends, I work at a coffee shop, my alarm goes off at 3:30 in the morning, and I spend my summers teaching surf and swim lessons just to make ends meet. I am worth so much more than 1.5%. My time is valuable, and I should spend it enjoying my family and my community that I've built. I'm gonna end with a quote over 120 years old, "Workers must have bread, but she must have roses too." During bargaining, we were offered crumbs, while we deserve roses. Roses are a healthy savings account, the ability to purchase a home, and as Mrs. Thompson knows how sometimes unaffordable New Smyrna Edgewater can be, the ability to purchase a home to stay close to my family, my mother who's visually impaired needs me close to her, my grandmother. Roses are plane tickets to Ohio to see my niece and nephew. We're not asking for the farm or the florist, we're asking for something that exists. Teachers, your teachers, that have earned an A deserve more than crumbs of bread. We deserve the bouquet. Thank you, and I appreciate your attention, Mrs. Brosmer. Thank you.
Patricia Randall.
Good evening, board members. Thank you for your time tonight. I just would like to say many of us do not condone the actions of one man who was very angry, and we sat respectfully, and we felt what you were feeling, and I'm sure when you go back and review, you'll see a lot of the expression on our faces, we're shocked. But disrespect comes in many forms. That was blatant. You had the opportunity to feel firsthand what many of us feel every day. That name-calling, where we cannot say or do what we want to say or do to a child that shouldn't be speaking that way. It doesn't feel good. It's a tough world out there. I've been teaching in Volusia County now for 39 years. I started teaching in 1986 in this county. I came from Lakeland in Polk County in 1985 is when I first started. Times have changed, it's tough. It's tough to swing with it. I started at, I think, $12,000 a year. Talk about not even being able to buy a car. However, cars were only about $1,000 at that time. I do think disrespect comes in many forms. That includes telling a group of teachers wearing red shirts that this room is at capacity. When I came in from the restroom to come back to my seat, and there were 12 available seats, that's disrespect in a very non-blatant form. So it's a two-way street. We have to rally to get your attention. You say you give us the opportunity to speak, and you do. We're here and it's late, but do you truly listen to what we're saying? We did not ask for the moon. We have been bargaining in good faith. Sending your bargaining team with hands tied with your final offer is certainly not bargaining in good faith. That's disrespect. We didn't come to the table and say, which by the way, we used to get 7% and 8% raises ourselves back in the day, but every year for the past 10 years, I have been begging for crumbs, as you so put. Crumbs. I have to beg, borrow, and steal. My daughter spent her 16th birthday at a rally with me because we were begging for crumbs. We've come to you to ask for that extra half a percent. Find a way. Please prioritize us. Let's begin in mutual respect. Let's be Team Volusia again, which includes you, me, our parents, and our students. And that starts with you also extending that respect. Find that extra money. It's not a lot, and it would certainly make us feel a lot more respected. Thank you for your time.
Okay, Ms. Johnson? Any additional cards? No. Alright, then we are moving on to the final item of the evening. Item 17.01. At this time, there can be any items from board members, the superintendent, or the attorney for discussion or announcement. Is there anyone that wishes to speak? Ms. Brosmer?
I am, I actually came prepared. I do have an item that I wanna bring to the board's attention, but I can't do it without saying how angry and embarrassed I am by what I've heard tonight. District leadership knows what I thought of 1.5 from the beginning. And there are, tonight, we're raving about homes bring hope, and completely ignoring the fact that there are no, there's no number of plaques, or certificates, or photo ops, or challenge coins that we can give to any teacher that helps them pay their bills. And what I heard tonight was horrifying. So I hope that we all take this to heart and do more than just be dignified in ignoring it. Now, on the issue that I wanted to bring to you, I am with the board's indulgence, asking that we schedule a review and an update of the contract that we have for what we euphemistically refer to as the Enterprise Elementary Replacement School, otherwise known as the DeBerry K8. The reason for that is because Kimley Horn has filed suit against BTS and the developer for work that they were commissioned to do on October 2nd, which was six days before this board even approved the interim agreement we now have with them. That raises a few questions by itself. But because the documents specifically indicate that the work Kimley Horn, it's only $19,000, which on a $60,000 or now 72, I'm sorry, $60 million or now $72 million budget item is pocket change, it still opens the door and raises the question about our own exposure. Because according to the interim agreement we have, any money that is fronted by BTS for Volusia County Schools in connection with this interim agreement has to be reimbursed. We've effectively given them a $5.3 million blank check to hire third parties to do some of this work, and there's no need for oversight that I have been able to identify in the agreement. But I think one of the reasons we need to look at this again is because the entire foundation for that interim agreement was that BTS had to be the owner of the property. And so the ITN that was issued, the language of the ITN was framed that way, and that's why we had so few respondents. That is no longer the case. We own the land. We now own two pieces of property on neither of which we can build a school as it stands right now. So, and another point in the interim agreement that concerns me is that as of January of this year, if we had not entered into a comprehensive agreement, there were going to be extension fees assessed against us. So I'd like to know if we're paying any of those, if they are being accrued. Is that the reason that the interim agreement is $60 million, but the budget item is $72 million? I really think it's time for us to get updated on this and find out what our exposure might be for any future bills that are not being paid by BTS for work that was commissioned on our behalf. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. What are you guys looking at?
I brought copies of the lawsuit for everybody, just so you have it for reference. There's no, I'm not expecting any questions answered, and I don't have any comments about it, I just wanted you to have the same information I had.
Thompson, do you have anything?
Yes, so I did a couple things. One, because of where agreements are, we can't speak on things, and so there are things I'd like to say and can't right now. But I did wanna say thank you to everyone that came out to speak tonight. I know it's late, I know you all have early mornings, and I do appreciate what you all do. I really do. My kids love their teachers, and I am so thankful every day that they have teachers that love them and that they love to go and see, and that make their days that much more special. And I feel like you do put your heart and soul into it. So I just wanted to say thank you for coming out tonight. Thank you for being respectful, because I understand that people do get passionate. I get passionate about things sometimes too, and say things that I would probably later regret. So thank you for being respectful and coming out tonight.
Mr. Cologne?
And so I'll echo that. Part of the impasse process is the fact that this is gonna come before the board at some point again, and so I'll refrain from sharing my thoughts. But just like this, I appreciate you all coming out, and while just procedurally, it's not appropriate for me to share my thoughts, I don't believe it's appropriate for me to share my thoughts. I do appreciate everyone who has come out today, and I look forward to the process moving forward. Thank you.
Dr. Balgobin?
Good.
Are you good?
Good, thank you.
Okay. Then I too want to say thank you for coming out, and for those of you that are here in the room for being respectful and professional. I don't know why, and some of you actually probably weren't here the last time we went to impasse, but when you go to impasse, we actually can't respond. We can't talk to the district staff about anything financially, and we can't talk to you guys about anything financially. So I'm gonna refrain from what I would want to say about some of the things this evening, but know that, and whoever did say, like, you started at $12,000, I started at 16, okay? So I understand that, and so, but we are appreciative of you coming out. I have taken pages of notes, which I will be reviewing, and as always, we want to hear from you. Just, and I'd also like to add that sometimes when we do receive emails, we actually send them on to who needs them right away, because we don't, our job is not the day-to-day operations, and I think that's confused at times. I think you think, well, if you send us the email, we can step in and override and take over a department that we know nothing about. But we can't do that. That's not the job of the board. The job of the board is to oversee the policymaking and vote on the policies that we have to follow, and oversee like the budget, as far as what is being collected, what they say we have to roll things back to, and know how the money is being spent, and follow what the laws dictate. So when it comes to day-to-day operations, and I do talk to a lot of people that call about day-to-day operations, and I'm happy to speak with you, but I basically then have to take you to the person that actually oversees that part. And sometimes that takes more time to get a resolution for what you need. But I was very attentive tonight to, and took the notes of who was here, and I was expecting to hear someone come and speak about a different topic that I learned about on Thursday evening, but nobody came to speak about that topic. But I would like to say this to my fellow board members, and maybe we need to set up a time to have a training on this during a workshop session. But just as everyone sitting in this audience that works on a school, each and every one of you are tasked with being a mandatory reporter in the event something is happening to a child. And we also, even though we sit on the board and we have a different role, we are required to be mandatory reporters. So I start a lot of, if somebody calls me for the first time, and I've never talked to you before, and you want to tell me something or share something, I usually start off the conversation with, I need you to please understand that if what you're gonna share with me involves a student that is possibly in a harmful situation, that there is no privacy to that conversation, because I'm required to report that and what has been said. And having been a former classroom teacher, I've made reports over the years, and I know the rules that you can't sit there, I mean, if they say it, whether you know if it's true or not, you have to report it. And I know, see by all the heads that are shaking out there, you guys know this, and I'm sure some of you have had to mandatorily report. It's one of the hardest things you have to do, but we're here to protect children. And so, Dr. Balgobin, I'd like, and I don't think it would take very long, but I think we probably need to have about 15 to 20 minutes at a workshop, so that all board members understand mandatory reporting, and that it is our requirement if someone tells us that, and ultimately whoever's telling us, if they're a school board employee, you should have already picked up the phone, or gone on to the website to do the mandatory reporting. But if you haven't, and you tell us, and we're required to do that. And so, as I said, I was expecting to have, hear from someone tonight, but they didn't come out. But I did hear something on Thursday evening, and I made a mandatory report, because someone shared information that needed to be reported. So, once again, I just wanna say thank you to each and every one of you that are sitting here in this audience and those listening at home. I do understand where you're coming from, and maybe because I've been around so long. Look, I was supportive of class size amendment, you know, and they just, as with every piece of legislation they write, they tweak it, they change it. Because I started long before we got to class size, and when we changed to class size, it was like taking a breath of fresh air. Because, I'll tell you, one year in first grade, I had 36, 21 boys and 15 girls. And I used to just say, if you- And I used to just say, if you would just take one table of six children, you know, out of my room, what a difference that would make. And you could pick whichever table, you know. But I'm thankful that we're where we're at. You know, I wish we could hold it like they originally sold it, but they didn't. They changed it to the average piece. But I do appreciate what each and every one are doing. And I will be talking to Dr. Balgobin about all the notes that I have taken. But thank you for being here this evening. And so at this time, it is 7:39, and we are adjourned.